Board of Commissioners Work Session for June 25, 2025. First, we have the Freshwater Trail. Brenda Batchelder with the EDC Director. Good morning.
Thank you. Yeah, just wanted to give you guys a quick update on the freshwater trail. So you'll see in your packet, we did get a logo designed for the freshwater trail. And we have had our first unveiling over in St. Helen on June 1st. So you'll see a great picture of the first fish. It's the first of five. So the artist Bob Batchick out of Sylvan Lake is working on our second fish right now, which will be placed at Sullivan Park in Prudenville. So we're hoping to have that done in July, early August for a celebration. So I gave a little bit of background on how the freshwater trail started. It really started from funding that we received from the county through the American Rescue Plan Act. It was a grant program. The EDC had applied for some funding for the First Impressions Assessment, which was done from MSU Extension. We were the first county ever to have a full-blown county assessment. Usually they do just a community or a city or a village. So I did put that county report in here. If there's any commissioner that would like the individual report for each community, we had one done for St. Helen, Holton Lake, Prudenville, and the Village of Roscommon. So, but there's that report. So we're super excited about the freshwater trail. We are using, in addition to the First Impressions funding that the EDC received from the county, we also received some funding from the county through the American Rescue Plan Act to do a small business and tourism grant program. That was a very successful program. So we had a little bit of money left over in that because that was for small businesses or tourism-related nonprofits. So we're using the remaining funding to support the purchase of the fish only. So those will be for the five fish. So the structure, the landscaping, all of that is being supported either through the public locations or from fundraising or community support. So, yeah, we've got five slated. We've got, you know, a walleye, brook trout, sunfish, bluegill. And so the First Impressions teams are working in their communities with those public spaces to, you know, find the best place to put the fish. So the whole goal of this is to create a tourism loop in Roscommon County. So we'll be doing some marketing materials, some maps. We'll have some QR codes at each location, letting them know, you know, about the community and other things that are great in the outdoors for them to explore. So super excited. It was well-attended at the St. Helen event. So we're hoping to have similar events as we move forward. As you see the timeline, you know, the artists, you know, these are six-foot fish. So it takes a while for him. It is made out of composite. They're not made out of wood any longer, but they are made out of composite, which is great because a lot less maintenance. So they should look great. So we have one slated for Sullivan Park, Lakeview Park down in Roscommon Township. I believe that Tracy from the Chamber is working with Lion Township. And I believe the proposed location is Phoenix Park. And then here in the Village, I know they're trying to decide if it's going to be at Hiawatha or Wallace, like, you know, all that good stuff. So we did apply for a grant through Put Your Community, Put Your Town on the Map from Consumers Energy. So myself and our team presented, pitched our idea to the panelists at the Crystal Mountain Small Town Rural Development Conference. We were selected one of 10 presenters. And so it could have been a prize of $25,015 or 10. However, we did not place. So we don't have that extra support for the trail. But super excited about it. Scott Marshall from over in St. Helen created the logo. So we'll only have a little bit of money to support some marketing, but super great things going on in our communities. It seems to be a lot of excitement for business owners and to have more of these as the projects unfold. So I wanted to kind of give you an update on that because Rex, Commissioner Wolfson, thought it was great. And I said, well, actually, the money really came from the county through that grant program. So I've got the First Impressions Assessment there. Like I said, if you'd like one on your individual community, I certainly can get that to you. And then, as I was getting prepared for this morning, I realized I hadn't sent over my director's report for April or May. So I just included that in your packet. And I'll be working on our next report for tomorrow's meeting. Any questions about the freshwater trail? It's part of our countywide marketing, so with the Tourism Bureau and the St. Helen Chamber, and then Tracy here at the Higgins Lake Roscommon Chamber.
I'd like to say that this was kind of impressive, the fish.
Yeah, very.
And just before the Bluegill Festival starts.
Yes.
Timing was good. But it just kind of reminded me, when you're a child, you went to different places and had your picture taken with Paul Bunyan or the Wild Goose and Wawa, the big thing. This may avail to the same opportunities for kids.
Yeah, that is the goal, is to have them in, you know, some great locations. So with the lake in the background, it made sense in St. Helen because they didn't have like a Welcome to St. Helen sign. So it made sense there, but I think there might be some moving of some additional signs. It's kind of hard to see when you come through St. Helen. But the community really pulled behind and really created a great sign. We met with Dave from Denton Township yesterday. And they're repurposing one of the Welcome to the Holton Lake area signs that used to be up on 18 when you were coming into town. They had the Holton Lake High School kids repaint the one side of the sign. So that's going to be the top for their sign. And so we went out to the site yesterday just to make sure they're on track. And, you know, a six-foot fish is pretty vast. So we hung up our banner yesterday. We did have a banner created, you know, coming soon, just to create some excitement. But that is the goal, is to get people to explore our community and see all those natural resources that we have available and take some great pictures.
Thank you.
That's awesome. You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So as the new person here, so this originally came from some of the American, you know, Rescue Act funds from the county.
Yep.
How long did that last? Because you had some extras left to use for this project. Does it have to be done by a certain?
It does. It does. The funding needs to be spent by December 31 of 2026.
2026, okay.
Yeah. So we had a remaining of like $17,000. So obviously, each fish is $2,200. So there'll be a little bit, we want to do some signage and a little bit of marketing. So, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sounds great.
Next, we have the Fitness Incentive Policy Discussion at the Hall. Commissioner Wolfson, would you like to?
We only have one policy to look at this week because of other things on the work session. The Fitness Incentive Policy. We need to look at it and see if we want to expand it, keep it the same, make any changes to it. I did notice one thing in it. It said if it was for a non-qualifying gym, it would be based on, the reimbursement would be based on maximum payable amount. What is that maximum payable amount, Jody? Is that a dollar amount or is that based on craft?
So we pay, the match of the craft is 35 and change a quarter. So what ends up being like? That's your agreement. We've always had an agreement with. So this actually originated, for years, was just with the Craft Center. And the Craft Center has kept their dues that they charge for three months extremely low for us. And so we match, and then the employee pays the other portion of that. Through the years, it came to our attention that there were members that, obviously, going to the Craft Center doesn't quite work for you, especially if you live in Holton Lake or like St. Helen. And we were able to garner a deal with a gym in Holton Lake where they would match that same parcel. So we had one in Holton Lake. And actually, it's a good thing to look at because they're under new membership, they're under new ownership now in the last year and a half or so. And I don't have a lot of people that go there. So we'd have to look at how much you'd be willing to, you know, how much we would be willing to put into that.
Mark, you move your mic and then turn it on so people can hear.
Can't even hear myself. I know there's exclusions, there's recreational activities of the gym memberships. Weight loss, smoking cessation programs. Are there any programs that we're cognizant of that would be applicable for this program?
Like, other than a gym membership?
I was thinking like yoga classes?
Yoga or Silver Sneakers, those types of programs.
Them fallen or non-qualifying then, or?
Right now, they do, yes. Unless it's included in your gym. I'm going to put that up to you, to you guys, to give me some direction.
Madam Chair, if for a vote down the road, I think we should open it up because there's a lot more programs right now that could be beneficial to employees. Smoking cessation programs, weight loss programs. There's a whole myriad of programs that have opened up in the last 15, 20 years that weren't available 20 years ago. So if we can open it up and allow employees of our county to go into a weight program or a smoking cessation program, I think it would be good.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It was brought to my attention and questioned whether this would include weight loss programs.
Sure.
So there is interest there. I don't know how we proceed on determining what we put in this now.
Maybe it's just send.
Email me their suggestions and?
Yeah, I would. And then that way, we can have things open for discussion. It could be that too, that we have just a dollar value and include the different programs that that could be included in.
It is 150. It's 37.50 a quarter right now.
Okay, so it'd be 100 currently. That's what it would be. So if they wanted to join other programs that the board felt, yeah, the max would be whatever it is that we set it at, 150 or whatever it entails.
I think it's important to realize, you know, we don't pay 100%, but it's an incentive program. That's the big word, incentive. But I think we should open it up to as many programs as possible to help people who lose weight or smoke or whatever they need to do.
I mean, and we're going to probably, in this process, miss some programs that are out there that people may want to use. Maybe we have something in there that comes to the board for approval or administrator for approval, if it's something that we missed.
Let's be as liberal as understanding as we possibly can.
So if everybody can just email Rex some ideas no later than a Tuesday of next week, that would be great.
After the meeting.
I believe we have several people using this program now. Is that 16 or 20?
It varies between 16 or 20, depending on the time of year. Winter, it tends to get used more than summer because people will exercise outside.
Madam Chair. Yes, just for clarity before I send information to Commissioner Wolfson. So right now, it's about 150 a year out of our pocket.
It's 150 out of our pocket, correct.
Each per person who takes advantage.
Correct.
And it sounds like we're all in agreement to make this not just a fitness incentive, but more of a health and wellness incentive for improving your health. Is that correct? And you just need, Commissioner Wolfson, some ideas on how to reword this? Is that correct?
Yeah, we should change the heading on it, yes.
By Tuesday, correct?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Now, we have the 2024 Audit Presentation. Tyler Waters, CPA.
Yes. Start my timer. We'll just dive right into this. If you have any questions, feel free to interrupt at any time. We'll keep it pretty informal. And yeah, I'll just highlight some of the main things from 2024 and in the audit report. But overall, the audit's going to look very similar to prior years. Just again, updated numbers. Which is the opinion letter from the audit. Same exact letter, just updated dates as last year. The relevant paragraphs are really the first two paragraphs. And the first one states that I've audited the financial statements of Roscommon County as of December 31, 2024. And then the second paragraph states that, in my opinion, the financial statements are materially correct, which is, that's summarized, it's a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion. It's the opinion that you want from an audit. I guess to give some clarity on what exactly that opinion means, the main thing it means is that you can, when you look at these financial statements and the numbers, you can reasonably rely on them and know that they are maybe not perfect, but it is accurate enough and within reason that it's good. If the opinion was modified or changed for any reason, unclean, for lack of terms, it would be something that there's a material misstatement. And materiality is something that we, as auditors, determine during planning procedures of the audit. And a little odd to me, but materiality for the county from a big-picture level is like $120,000. So for me to really modify my opinion in the audit report, there would have to be a $120,000 misstatement that basically management disagrees to correct in the financials. I would say, hey, this should be reported this way. And Jody would basically say, no, I want it this way. And I would say, well, I'm going to disclaim my opinion because I disagree with you. And so just for some background on what exactly that means.
I didn't hear that.
No. Situations where there's those one-off things that it's like, no, we want this to show this way. And it's like, no, but accounting standards say it should be this way. So we have a disagreement, we disclaim. There's other things that can make the opinion unclean or, you know, modified. But that's probably the most likely one that would pop up if something were to ever arise. So just some background on what exactly that means. Overall, clean opinion, that's the main thing from this letter. The rest of it touches on some professional standards that I have and that management has related to the audit. Bore you with those. Any questions on? Financials, we'll go to page, what is it? 23, page 23. So this is the statement of revenues and expenses for the fund balance, or the funds of the county. So General Fund, 911, Sheriff, and then the Housing were the major funds. And then there's all the non-major other funds that you have, Courts, all of that, everything that the county does, basically. So I'll just highlight some of the main things. Overall, it was a positive year, I'd say, revenue and expense-wise for the county. Just looking at the totals column on the far right of all funds combined, the top section's the total revenue. So the total revenue for the year finished at $23,686,000, which is up 3 million, roughly 3 million from the prior year, or 15%. That increase really came from the property taxes collected by the county, which was up just over 2 million, which is that $15,757,000 in the top rate. And then also another positive that I like to point out is the interest income for the year. The county brought in $583,000 in interest income in the funds by themselves. So that's just the funds, which half a million, over half a million dollars in earnings from money just sitting there is a positive in my eyes. So overall revenue, up 15%. That's, other than those two items, everything was pretty consistent year-over-year. The reason the property taxes really went up is because the two special assessment districts for the dam restorations. Those assessments started in 2024. The prepayment started. Those were revenues that boosted the property taxes, the 2 million. Not the full amount, but a good chunk of it. So continuing down the middle section, the expenditures. The total expenditures finished 2024 at $21,9,792, which is up about $865,000 from the prior year, or 4% increase year-over-year. So if you think about the revenues being up 15%, your expenses up 4%, I would say that's a big positive and kind of shows a picture of managing your spending pretty well for 2024 and keeping it within the budget. So good year overall revenue compared to expense. Those numbers flow down into the bottom line, a change in the fund balance. Overall fund balance from the totals column finished the year at $12,408,000. All fund balances combined had a 52% increase year-over-year. Each fund in general, for sake of some statistics, the General Fund fund balance was up 44%. The 911 fund balance was up 28%. Sheriff's fund balance was up 39%. Housing has a little less activity. That one was down, but that's a good thing because that means that money's getting put into the community for housing rehab and projects. And then the non-major funds cumulative were up 76% in fund balance. So fund balance increases across the board, with the exception of housing, which kind of expected if that department, fund is going to spend money on projects. I think a year overall revenue and expense-wise. Increase in revenues, manage spending well leads to an increase in fund balances across the board. That's pretty much it. You know, I'd say it's impressive from the expense side in the sense that costs have went up over the last year with inflation and everything. The health costs, HRA costs are kind of skyrocketing. I know the county's working on managing that and changing some health plans and stuff, trying to manage those costs. But considering those things and some of the capital spending, I thought the county did pretty well with managing its spending. Any questions on the revenue and expense?
Tyler, can you just tell everyone about the non-major governmental funds? Like what that would include?
Yeah, I mean, it's all, so the major ones are basically in that planning for the audit, we have to determine where the most activity is, where's the materiality. Those four funds are basically where most of the activity is. The non-major fund is a combination of every other fund you have. So it's the drain districts, it's the dams, it's all the small little police sheriff funds that you have, you know, drug, blanket on, all the courts.
Okay.
Robate, front of the court, parks. There's in the back, I don't know what page, but all, each non-major fund has a column, just like this report is in the back. Major fund, there's four pages of revenue and expense and four pages of assets and liabilities if you wanted to see them.
Okay.
Aging, veterans, all that has its own little financial statement in there. So, yeah, if you want to see the breakdown of that and some of those increases and decreases, you can look at it there too. Good question. So if you could turn back two pages, to page 21. Stick with governmental funds. This is the balance sheet, which is the assets and liabilities. There's really not, I don't think there's a lot to point out on this. And at least for this year, everything was very consistent year-over-year. The only changes really that were impacted were cash and kind of taxes receivable, which county had an increase in fund balances from the revenue expense. And those increases basically flowed to the assets of the county. Where the cash increased, finishing the year at $10,553,000. Cash is up 2.9 million from the prior year. And then the taxes receivable is also up 1.1 million. And then the accounts receivable, the $1,107,000. That is actually opioid money that's due from the trust and agency account. And that'll be gone next year. But basically, the county's received about $1 million in opioid funds that will eventually be used for?
I'm going to edit your comment. It's not going to be gone. It won't be a receivable next year because it's been moved to its own fund, so.
The receivable's not going to be there. It'll be in cash next year. So that $10 million will go up $1 million in cash because it's just money moving around. In the end, the total assets increased $5 million from the prior year, which is that $23,526,000. So basically, the profit, for lack of terms, increase in fund balance all went to your assets, to the county's assets, which is a big positive. Liabilities did not have much change, and we kind of talked about the fund balances on the previous statement. So that's kind of the main thing with the balance sheet is positive increase in assets in the audit for this financial statement. Any questions on that? So a couple of quick things to touch on, back on page 12. The board has its general fund policy, balance policy. That policy was increased to 18%.
18%.
18? Yeah, it was 15, and now it's 18. So as 2024, that percentage of general fund balance is at 22%. So board's policy is 18%. Currently, it's at 22% as of 2024, so.
Will you explain to them how you calculate what the fund balance is?
Yeah, so basically, you take the ending fund balance of the general fund, which was on the previous statement, I think it was, what, 2.2 million? Yeah, just 2.2 million. And then that gets compared to the general fund annual expenditures, which can fluctuate a little bit. But so if you have 2.2 million in your fund balance and the annual expenditures were like 1.8 million for the year, it's just the ratio, 2.2 million divided by 1.8 million, or the other way around. Yeah.
And my reason, well, my reason for having you clarify that is just to remember that on December 31, 2024, you have a 22% fund balance. But on January 1 of 2025, you're working with a whole new budgeted expenditure. So you actually have a lower fund balance, which we'll get to. I mean, it's not a low fund balance, but I'm just saying, it's going to be 19% and within 24 hours of that, so.
I was reading this table wrong. This is showing the policy fund balance versus the actual fund balance. So your actual fund balance, the county's, was 2.2 million. The expenditures for the general fund were about 9.7 million. 2.2 million divided by 9.7 million gives you that ratio. County would like it to be 18%. It's currently at 22%. So that's the comparison as fund balance to the annual expenditures. And if your expenditures fluctuate every year, that's going to obviously have an impact. Like, say, you have a big capital project or something in the general fund, that would impact it. But dropped down in the past 10 years, at the beginning 10 years ago, and it's kind of on an uptrend back up. So hopefully, that uptrend keeps continuing. Obviously, if county keeps managing its spending like it did in 2024, I think that uptrend will continue, or it'll still meet, continue to meet that policy level that you want. So good job overall with that. On page 14, I know the jail is typically a topic of discussion. There's, I'd say mainly good with the jail. One bad is that expenditures passed 2 million for the first time ever, which is kind of to be expected because the volume revenue side also increased in 2024, which was a big positive too. So there was a new record of just over 2 million expenses, but there was also a new record of $514,000 in revenues for the jail. So it was just an up year across the board. Federal inmates were up. The new agreement with Ascot County, I think, is working out pretty well. That was a positive to that. There's some new things getting sold in the commissary that are seemingly to be a hit. And that's bringing in a little more revenue for the jail. So obviously, this is never going to be a flush revenue to expense. It's just going to be way too difficult to fill the gap of 1.5 million. But I would say, excluding that part of it, overall, there was a positive year for the jail. I mean, the cost per prisoner was $92 in 2024. Last year, it was $112. The year before, it was $103. So a big drop in cost per prisoner year-over-year, even though you might see a $2 million expenditure that, you know, might not look as appealing. Overall financially, it was a good year. So that's most of the financial stuff there. Tax payment fund, consistent year. If you wanted to see that financial statement, it is on page 25 and 26. Tax payment fund, kind of like the little treasure chest for the county. $9 million in that bank account as of 2024. That's up $500,000 from the prior year. So that's collecting, you know, the admin fees and interest on delinquent taxes. It builds up in that fund. If you need to use that money for anything specific, you can transfer it out to fund other operations. The county hasn't really needed to touch that money very much. I think there's typically about $900,000 to a million that gets transferred out of the tax payment fund on an annual basis to supplement certain areas. That was consistent for twenty twenty-four, so there really weren't any outliers within the tax payment fund. It was just another consistent year with earnings. I guess to that point, the interest earned for that year was three hundred and eighty-two thousand. So if you have five hundred and eighty in the general fund and three eighty from tax payment interest, you're pushing a million dollars in interest earnings here, which is a big positive and a way to earn extra cash without putting a lot of effort in. That's good overall. Last few things I'll touch on. On page four is the long-term debt disclosure for the county. Not a whole lot I wanted to point out, but I just wanted to comment that the Johnston Haven Drain District and the Channel Court Drain District, I believe, are on their last year of payments for the debt. So at the end of twenty twenty-five, those should be done, have in payments. A couple other drain districts still have a couple more years. And then this disclosure is also where you'll see the debt for the bonds taken out for the Houghton Lake and St. Helen Dam's restoration. That's the five hundred and fifty-two and the one fifty-one. So overall, the debt, I think the county could handle, it's not an issue or anything. It's just if you wanted to see the breakdown of what debt the county has, that's where it is. Some of it's gonna go away in twenty twenty-five and some of it's kind of new for twenty twenty-five, so. All good there. On page, what is it? Sixty-six is the MERS schedule, which I know is a fun topic. I apologize for the small font, it's getting harder to fit this on the page every year. Might have to start breaking it into two pages, just so we can actually see it. Won't spend a lot of time on it. Main points of it is the pension liability, which is the top section. That the pension liability is basically what MERS says the county would owe to be fully funded. That finished the year at thirty-seven million, six hundred and seventeen thousand, which is up about one point, just under one point two million from the previous year. So liability of, say, thirty-seven million. What offsets that liability is the county's assets in that plan or the net position. Net position as of twenty twenty-four ended at twenty-seven million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, so you have a liability of basically thirty-seven million, assets of twenty-seven million, the difference of those two is the net pension liability, what does the county owe? That's roughly the ten million or ten million, three hundred and forty-two thousand, to be a little more exact. That puts the county at seventy-three percent funded. The relevant percentage for being funded is sixty percent. When you drop below sixty percent, that's when the state starts cracking down on you a little bit. Don't believe Roscommon's had any issues with the funded percentage over the years, you guys have done a good job managing that. Really, the big fluctuations and drops typically come from the market declines and that impacts, you know, in the assets because the value declined, which causes your percent funded to drop down. And you could see that in twenty twenty-two, the market had a drop and the plan lost two point seven million in value. That dropped your, you were at eighty-one percent funded in twenty-one, then it dropped down because of the market decline, you're at sixty-seven percent in twenty twenty-two. So just the market decline really took a fourteen percent decline. And then since twenty-two, you bounce back up to seventy-one and then you're at seventy-three because the markets bounced back, so. It's a little bit of a roller coaster ride. The one nice thing about the MERS plan for the county's sake, and where did that go? A little, I don't think I included it in the audit report, now that I'm looking at it. MERS report has the table and we looked at it at the exit. I think twenty twenty-eight or twenty twenty-nine is when the MERS contribution amount is gonna peak out as far as like how much are you, is the county contributing to the plan? And then from twenty twenty-eight, it starts to decline pretty significantly, so twenty twenty-five right now, so really you got three years of higher MERS contributions and it'll go up. And I think it was on page sixty-seven, you can see the schedule of contributions because the actuary calculates what should be contributed and then the county contributes that, but can contribute more. For twenty twenty-four, the actuarially determined contribution was just over one point four million, the county contributed one point five million. So you contributed a little bit extra. That's gonna keep going up for the next few years, as you can see, it's kind of went up over the last ten years. I think it's getting close to two million by twenty twenty-eight, but then it falls off a cliff and drops down to like eight hundred thousand the year after that because you're hitting a point where you're funded enough, so. Yeah, the budget has been able to handle that over the years. I'm not saying contribute more or contribute less, just keep doing what you're doing. And then you should see some benefit in the coming years of that contribution amount dropping down, open up a little cash flow for the county. MERS plan's in a good place, even though it looks like big numbers, I'd say it's in a good place. Last couple of things are, there is a letter. Oh goodness, audit report's getting too long. On page one hundred and ten. This is basically the governmental audit standards letter that states that as part of the audit, I obtain an understanding of the county's internal controls. I don't render the controls, but I do have to understand them to plan and make my procedures and figure out what to do if procedures are working. Didn't, and it would discuss any deficiencies that were significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. There's one significant deficiency on page one hundred and twelve, it's the last page, it's a standard deficiency. It's the fact that I was preparing the financial statements for the audit. It's just not cost effective for the county to have, you know, pay for the services, to have the whole audit basically prepared for them, me to come in and audit it. Jody is probably as close as you're gonna get to that in, in reality, so. That, this is just kind of a standard disclosure, it's not an issue or anything. I'm just basically required to put it in there because I assist with doing the MERS calculation and doing some of these disclosures in the audit report. But for the most part, the accounting is already done in, in the standards of GAAP because you have Jody and Marcy and the, the team doing it. So they're doing year-end accruals and payroll accruals that are all accounting standards. It's just some of the stuff like MERS and OPEB and things that I come in and assist with that requires that disclosure. So not an issue, just required disclosure, other than that, that letter's clean. And then there's a loose leaf letter in the back for communication with governance that touches on some other professional standards. It just highlights, it's the same exact letter as la, prior years, just states things like I didn't have any difficulties dealing with management, you didn't consult with another accountant because you didn't like something I said. There were no disagreements, the one comment in here is, and it's on page three of that letter, is a budget comment. Basically, I just have to disclose if there are overspending in certain line items or certain funds, the state requires that those be disclosed. So I just put them in here to communicate them. It's not an issue with me, I, I think there should be budget variances, no one ever does a perfect budget. So if there's not, to me, that doesn't tell the truth of how you actually budgeted throughout, throughout the year, so. Those were the line items that had budget variances now. Kind of to that point of how the budgeting process works, you know, at year end, governmental entities typically do amendments to the budget to kind of make sure there are no budget variances and don't a hundred percent agree with that process, even though it might make sense for the state's sake of not having those variances, but I think it kind of hides where the true overspending might have been if you're amending all these budgets at year end to make them work out. It doesn't tell the big, real picture of who hadn't, where was the spending and where were the variances that came in over what we actually budgeted and so just kind of my sense on that. Other than that, there were no real comments that I thought warranted the board's, you know, communication. It was a clean year overall, the staff did a great job communicating with me. A couple of them I bugged quite a bit and they are very responsive and thorough with getting back to me, so thanks to the staff and everyone I worked with. Another, another good year overall and financially, I think the county's in a good place and I'd say it was a good bounce back year after having all the ARPA spending and I think a lot of spending for the past few years. I, I thought it was a good bounce back year of controlled spending, slight increase in revenues and kind of bouncing back those fund balances, so. Hopefully that trend can continue for the county. Other than that, any questions on the audit?
Any questions?
Hi.
Yes.
Tyler, so going back to what you were just talking about, when you're trying to reconcile back and forth throughout you know, sometimes you do that at the very end of the year and sometimes you do that regularly.
Yeah.
Did I understand that it is helpful to do that more frequently and not waiting till the very end so that you have a better understanding of what's overspending, what's not?
Budgeting, yeah.
So as you think about a budget going forward, you have a better idea where to start that budget.
Yeah.
Versus adjustments throughout the year, did, did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, I'd say they're thinking about it correctly, it's more, so when there are large budget variances, that has to be reported to the state when I submit the audit. And then the state turns around and sends a letter and says, hey, we need you to explain this and do a corrective action plan for that overspending. I think what happened, and this predates me, I think with that kind of policy by the state, that caused governmental entities to say, okay, well, we don't want that letter, so at year end, we're just gonna look at our budget actual and we're gonna amend every variance that's there, so we don't have any budget deficits on any line items. But to me, from an actual usage, usage side of it, of using the budget and trying to, as a tool, if you do that, then you're hiding all of your overspending in a way by saying, okay, we're gonna amend all this so the def, you know, the variances go away, but now when you actually go look at the budget, you're not gonna have any variances to base off of where was overspending occurring? So it's almost like you need have an actual budget, you know, actual verse budget for year end, but then do a second one at year end. That's like, okay, now we amended it for the state's sake, so we don't get any letters.
Okay.
But I would say, yes, you have your original budget at the beginning of the year. If you have areas that you didn't plan for that are gonna have additional spending, definitely make those amendments throughout the year and say, you know what, we weren't planning to buy this ambulance, but now we are because of this happened, so amend the budget to add that in there. But it's more of just that year end bulk, you're going through every line saying, okay, variance here, variance here, amend, 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 amend. That just hides all the relevant data to make next year's budget better, in my opinion, so. That's just, you're doing it so you don't get dinged by the state, but I think that kind of hinders the whole purpose of actually doing a budget when you're amending the whole thing at the end of the year. So it's more of a use the one before you make all the amendments for actually doing next year's budget in a way, if you're trying to control that spending. Because otherwise, you're gonna just keep increasing that budget based on the final amended amounts and.
That helped.
Yeah.
Yes, thanks.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
How my mind interprets it, and I see that townships do it, all the governments that are required to have budgets do that year end amendment. I'm like, this just hides everything, you're not actually seeing the true picture of where was, things were overspent, so.
I only have one other question, but I can save it and make sure anybody else, unless, okay. So the tax payment fund, which definitely comes up, and I'm the new person on the board, so a lot of this could be just my lack of knowledge. It looks good at the end of twenty-four, but if we have already got things that we have discussed in this board that we're going to use that money for, any advice on how we want to maintain and keep that safe and looking good? Because I think we've already started to use some of that.
Lawsuit that's pending is the big ticket item.
Okay.
Or the potential property tax.
Yeah, the property tax lawsuit.
Yeah, we're paying that out, which I think you guys kind of have an idea of what that couple million maybe, I think, is. What's projected potentially be or the potential liability. So if you got seven point five million in the tax payment fund and you gotta pay that out, you're still left with five, over five. If there's other stuff that the county needs to use it for, you definitely can. A big thing that's, that money's used for, and at some point, you know, maybe not today, but Marcy might be able to better explain it, is that money gets used to pay off all the townships, delinquent taxes. So you need to have kind of a certain allotted amount in there to be able to pay off all the townships, so then you don't have to go take out a bond to do so. And that's the big point of basically having that treasure chest of money is so you can do that without getting a bond. So as long as you have enough money in there to do that, then you should be good. But at the same time, it's also a great tool to kind of have a savings if you need to supplement any other aspects of the county.
So Tyler, the board just reapproved a tax payment fund policy that basically gives, gives the direction to the treasurer to save, look at the amount they had to pay out for last year, add an additional percentage for increases, take into consideration anything like the pending payments that'll have to go back, the two point five million for that, and then figure out what would be available to the board for special projects. So if they continue that process, that'll.
So that's, yeah, that's perfect planning. I mean, you're making sure the money's in there, that needs to be in there for the purposes, the main purposes of the tax payment fund. But then if there is any extra that, you know, beyond that, that the county wants to use, that, yeah.
And I'll clarify, I do believe that that process was spot on and that our treasurer does that work. I think when sometimes the public hears, wow, it's great, we're talking about twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
So sometimes that message needs to be clear that, okay, that looked good then, here's where we're at today. And we as board members say, we need to make sure we keep that in a good position, but also know when we can use it versus, well, I heard you say you have all this money. Well, we may not have that today based upon what we're hearing on this audit. So I just wanted to make sure that that was a little bit more clear, so it doesn't get confused as we start thinking about how to spend money.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Exactly, and the tax payment fund might not show the liability for that stuff that would offset it, you know, like your general fund might. Any questions?
Just, just a comment, twenty-two percent is an excellent, excellent report. You know, the credit goes to the employees, department heads and Jody and her staff for the excellent job they're doing, so that's, that's, thank you.
Yeah, I would agree, it's the people that are making it happen and.
Perseverance and dedication is outstanding.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time as well.
Yeah, do you want me to turn that off or leave it on?
Yes, he did. With no further comments, this meeting will be adjourned and the next meeting starts at ten o'clock.
Of the United States of America, in superpower, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Russo, Morley.
Here.
Wolfson.
Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Censor.
Here.
Approval of the agenda. I also need to add under unfinished business, a response to public comment.
Still noted, Madam Chair, thank you.
Any discussion? Roll call. Wolfson.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Would you carry? Approval of the consent agenda. In the consent agenda, we have meeting minutes from June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, board meeting, June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, lake level control structure, and the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, special lake level control structure. In that, there needs to be one, two corrections, and that is on the amounts. Which I just had, that was in the minutes? Yep, that was in the minutes. And class As should read eight hundred and eight thousand, twelve dollars and twenty-nine cents, and claims and accounts should read four hundred and forty-two thousand, one oh four twenty-four. Also in the consent agenda, there were correspondences regarding the Higgins Lake Special Assessment District, a letter regarding ICE, a letter to the Board of Commissioners regarding Houghton Lake, letter from Hope Shores Alliance, MAC legislative updates, a letter regarding Zoom, MSU regarding their GIS program, and Region Nine area on aging twenty twenty-six annual implementation plan. Monthly department reports from the sheriff for May twenty twenty-five activity report and stat report, and our administrator controller report. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Roll call please. Morley.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried. Public comment for agenda items only. Is there any public comment for agenda items? Visitors. We have three visitors, if the ladies would like to come up and state your name.
No, I'm not gonna, no, I'm just gonna introduce. I'm on the board for NEMSCA and through this affiliation, I have met these two wonderful, very professional ladies. very professional ladies. This is Frances Omani, she's the Strategy Development Director, and also Taryn Sheffield, she's the Housing...
Program Supervisor.
Program Supervisor for homeless in our region. So in my job at Michigan Works, and why I'm there to represent the poverty or the people who are in need of our community, it's really apparent that we need to understand more about poverty, how it affects our community. And I think there's a little misunderstanding about how much of it we really do have and what it looks like. So instead of me talking, they're going to talk. Welcome them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Do we sit? Yep. Done all about sitting. Thank you for allowing us to speak today. As Tammy introduced, she's a wonderful board member for NMSCA. As a reminder to the people in this room, there are two community action agencies that provide programs here in Roscommon County, Northwest Community Action Agency, this is your official community action agency. However, NMSCA Northeast provides a variety of programs, which one of them is something Taryn will be focusing on, since she oversees the housing program here in Roscommon County and surrounding counties. As I was introduced, I'm Frances Omani, and Strategy and Development Director for NMSCA, and it's a pleasure to be here today. As Tammy mentioned earlier, poverty, of course, is a real issue in all of northeast Michigan and scattered throughout the state as well. Roscommon is no different. I just pulled up the latest Alice information and data, and according to the Alice report from 2023, 14% of people that are in Roscommon County fall under the poverty threshold, which, as a reminder, is 100% of the poverty level is $23,000 for a family. However, 31% fall into what's called the Alice threshold. And what that means, as a reminder, is that these are people that are above that 100% poverty level, but still cannot make ends meet with the income that they're bringing in from one, two, three jobs. And in Roscommon County, 31% of the population here in this county fall under that. So when you put those together, we're looking at 45% of the population in this county fall under either Alice or the federal poverty guidelines. So why is that important to know? Because sometimes it's not very apparent or very visible, right? People that are struggling with poverty and struggling to make ends meet sometimes can be hidden from the community, specifically the homeless population, which Taryn will be talking about. A lot of times you don't see that, right? Because they might be camping, they might be living in their car, they might be couch surfing, they might be doubled up, tripled up in their homes. But they are the vulnerable population that is throughout our coverage area. And this is a really personal thing for me as well, because just a little bit about my background is, I was a teenage mother. I had my first child when I was 17 and got married shortly after I graduated from high school and had two more children very quickly. So I had three children by the time, I was still 21. So you see the gray here in my head, that's because of being such a young mom. And statistically, I shouldn't be here sitting right now talking about what I do for NMSCA, right? Statistically, I probably would be one of those vulnerable, in that vulnerable population, battling with poverty. And I did do that for a long time in my twenties. I was one of those people that needed that support and that help, that would come home every day and worried that my lights didn't turn on because I wasn't able to pay my bill, or worried that my water was shut off because I couldn't pay my water bill, or so on and so forth. However, I was able to put myself through school and ended up getting my vouchers and my master's degree, and was able to, you know, really achieve what I felt like was what I wanted to achieve, which is self-sufficiency. But it wasn't, I wasn't on my own, right? I had help from my mentors, my family, my friends, and was able to have that compassionate look about what that support is. And so I want to transition over to Taryn now to talk specifically about our vulnerable population regarding the homeless population here in Roscommon County, and all of the wonderful work that that program has done under the NMSCA umbrella. I've said this before to Taryn and Victoria, our, her director, that I think that the homeless staff that work in Roscommon County and all of our counties, I call them our angels because you, what you guys do to help the most vulnerable is pretty amazing. So Taryn, go ahead.
Thank you, Fran. So just a little bit of an overview of our program. We have a coordinated entry system. This allows everyone that is in need of services to have the same exact access. So it doesn't matter where you're at, where you're from, where you're going to, you call the number, you get the same assessment every time. Part of that is if we are dealing with individuals that are unhoused, they go through and get a referral for our street outreach. Our street outreach then helps them meet their basic needs, as well as provides housing applications, works with them to transition them into housing. So we have a couple different categories that we work within. We have those that are in what we call a literally homeless situation, so camper, car, tent, shed, gas station, bathroom. If you wouldn't live there, they shouldn't live there. We also have emergency shelters, as well as charitable organizations, churches, St. Vincent, Salvation Army, that will pay for emergency motel stays. So just some of the access points that individuals that are seeking shelter have. The part of our program provides case management, so we don't just provide financial assistance, we help them organize what that barrier that led to their housing, or their housing instability. So do they need budgeting? Do they need job? We send referrals to Michigan Works. Need clothes for work, for interviews? We work with other agencies to get them vouchers, to get them clothes. So it's, it's a really, we wrap our arms around these individuals that need the help so that we can get them back on their feet. Right now, what we're experiencing is finding housing availability. There is a huge deficit between the individuals that need housing and the housing that's available. Felony records prohibit individuals moving into income-based units, there's a lack of those, there's really long wait lists. There's two that I know in the county that, one is elderly and one is just low-income family, have two to three-year wait lists, just here in Roscommon County. With that, we've had a lot of private landlords, especially after COVID, I know we don't like saying that word, have moved into short-term rentals. They've seen a greater return on investment than doing Airbnb and things like that, instead of getting away from the long-term rentals. This unfortunately has stifled our ability to house people faster, especially when there's things that would prohibit them moving into income-based housing. I do have some, I have a paper I can provide, but it provides the 2024 stats for Roscommon County for our program and what we have been able to accomplish. In the year of 2024, there was approximately 173 unhoused households. We were able to prevent 11 households from being evicted. And in total, we had provided up to 18 months of rental assistance to households. There were 49 veterans that were facing housing insecurities, 12 youth and young adult households, and 83 of those households were fleeing domestic. But as we know, with great hardship comes great success. So I would like to share some success that our program has been able to help with. A former homeless prevention client by the name of Shelley Heard is a Roscommon County resident. Through her use of NMSCA and its community partners, she was the 2025 Michigan Community Action Award recipient for Client of the Year. She lost everything when her husband passed suddenly from a heart attack on his way to work, but with the help of our program and other community supports, she was new to the area and able to secure safe and stable housing. She is now working full-time and contributing to this community. Shelley did not want to handout, but asked for a hand up, and now she is an active community member, and she hopes that others recognize in the importance of programs like this, and she likes being able to share her story.
Wonderful. Can we answer any questions about NMSCA programs, or specifically the Homeless and Prevention Division that Taryn's representing today?
Just like you make a comment on behalf of the county, the citizens of our great county, thank you for your passion and dedication.
Thank you.
We will leave these over there for anybody that wants annual reports or information about NMSCA. You want me to just pass them out now here? I can do that. Yeah. Absolutely. So...
Thank you for being here today, Frances.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
This is a part of our future goals.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have any other visitors? So we're on to unfinished business, the strategic plan, action plan. Commissioner Morley?
I will, before we jump into the action plan, can we revisit our meeting rules brochure? I have taken as much feedback from everyone from the last meeting on edits that needed to be made. We had some people actually help us with some typos and other little things that might make it a little bit better for our readers to look at. So this will, I'm hoping, will be our last rendition. I am asking that each of you please take one more final look to make sure that it reads properly, that what we're asking our people to do to get feedback and responses is accurate so that we can follow that. And if there's any other typos before I take this to print, this is a rough version, so I just did this on my own. But I think we've captured, you know, like Rex, I know we had some of your information, and that the different districts and townships within our district that we represent needed to be updated. One of the other things we did under board responses is just try to, instead of making them all separate bullets, there were some things that really wrapped under that third bullet about, if you wish to address the entire board email, and how to get those things back onto our agenda, if you, if that's your course of communication for us. So hopefully that's a little bit more, a little clearer on that as well. I'm pretty sure that the FOIA request information is accurate now with the proper link to go out to the policies and forms and stuff like that as well. So I'd love to get this put to rest and have it cleaned up before the next meeting, so that maybe we can have them printed for the next meeting, at least one, but a handful. So if I could maybe say, get any other feedback to me by the beginning of next week, Monday, I'll get some extras started. Before we send, Jody, I think we have a couple options on where to go print, the real nice ones, but I'll, I'll do the first batch just to have some at the next meeting.
Question? Are they going to be two-page printing or one-page?
If you'll see the way I folded it, it's front and back. I just did this myself, so I didn't go have this printed professionally.
So it'll be one page?
But it'll be a one page, and it'll fold up just like that.
I'd like to, I'd like to mention that at the Richfield Township meeting, they were having some problems with how to conduct the meetings. He held this up as an example.
Hi. Awesome. What we can communicate and, and explain and be transparent, I think that's only helpful for the people who come and participate, so. All right, so by Tuesday, by Monday or Tuesday, Tuesday at the latest, final, and then I'll, if I haven't heard from you, I'm just going to go ahead and make some and get them printed. Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right. So moving on to the goals of our strategic plan, I did get some feedback, the copy you have before you, Chairman Censor had given us some, some additional information to share. So maybe we are finishing up June, so if we want to look at that, we did add that one of the policies that we talked about earlier in our work session was around the fitness policy that we will be looking at at our next meeting, so that's there. Then the implementation of the Houghton Lake Level Management with Operations Manual is still in progress. That's continuing to work, but at least we have that hearing completed and we can move forward with that. And the determination of the delegated authority and roles for the consultant, that's still in progress. Moving, because we are almost right around the corner for July, I know that you will see, under, the Wage and Salary Committee will begin their budget prep and their feedback is already started. The Board of Commissioners will send our chair the format and information needed for the budget review by August 1. So that's our deadline to make sure that we meet for our chair. When we're thinking about some of the social issues, and we just heard some, you know, issues around our homeless and things like that, we have that, we have our opioid money that comes in, we have, things like that would fall under that bucket. And if I understand correctly, those are some tax items that we, we might start focusing on as we get kind of into the fall, that this budget round, our controllers evaluation and those goals and things, those are the very first priority, if I'm hearing this correctly. I just want to make sure I'm sure that that's where, we are part-time commissioners, we are not full-time, that those are the two things that we've really got to wrap up and do well, and potentially put some of those task force meetings to get set up as we move into like September, October, and through the winter, when things aren't quite as crazy in this county as they are during the summer season. But I am open to any suggestions on that, and if there's any changes you want to see or added.
Opioid money, opioid money is important.
So what would you recommend? When, when would you like to start working on that and having some special conversations about it?
Say, end of August, September.
Okay.
We'll get the word out to the public, we'll get the word out through papers, we get to discuss it here internally.
Put your microphone down.
Okay, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, within the next couple of months, we should put that opioid money, we should, we should be able to tell the public where it's going to go. At least begin the process.
Yeah, go ahead. Well, I was going to suggest that you look at maybe, maybe at your first August meeting, determining how, what the makeup of a task force looks like. Commissioner Wilson and I had a little conversation during the middle, and he was suggesting, you know, we're looking for people from the community that have knowledge of the impacts of opiates, and that might be in housing, or that could be in transportation, that could be within the realm of rehabilitation, all of those areas. So maybe decide where you want to try to gain people, and then have that into place by, by the end of your September meeting. So go out, have those conversations, accept applications if you want to have people, you know, write you letters of interest, that type of a thing, and really start kind of having them put their first meetings together in October, November.
What I'll do, Madam Chair, is I'll contact Jo Jeanne Thompson. I know Jo Jeanne's been interested in some of that opioid money. It's important to contact her and see if she can come to the meeting and maybe give some input. I'd like to see that we start spending this money in 2026 towards programs. So however, we have to move up that scheduling to, so that we can budget for 2026. That's just my opinion.
Is there, our controller has a great, another good suggestion there, too. When you think about that task force is really the group that we need. It suggests that one of us commissioners is serving and leading that task force and bringing the right people to the table. Because it's going to be something, in my mind, you've got housing, you've got transportation, you've got rehabilitation, you've got how to use the money, and they're all somewhat intertwined, and they all fall under that social impact goal. So maybe it's more of a social impact task force that is, has a couple groups that are focusing on, how are we going to use opioid money, and working through that group to make sure that that money is going to help us, regardless of its housing and transportation and things like that. But it might be a task force that's kind of more all-encompassing of that, but not so large that you can't move forward. We don't need 20 people on a task force.
Is the task force dedicated by the state statute?
So the task force, as far as the, your task force will be yours that you appoint and give direction to. The spending of the opiate money, the state has given us a 90,000-page guidebook on what it can and cannot be used for, which is fine, it has an up... on what it can and cannot be used for, which is fine, it hasn't updated in the last year. I've got it tagged and flagged and ready to direct whenever the board decides how they want to move forward. But yes.
The makeup of the task force is not?
Correct, that is not a, that is.
That's our choice.
That is your choice, yes.
I do have a couple of samples that I will get of different counties and what they have done for wraparounds and who encompasses their task force and how those are working out in these departments because they've already started them and have started implementing them.
I could volunteer to be a board member on that task force.
Thank you, Rex.
Rex, I'll work with you on that.
All right, we've got Rex and Mark who will work on that. I'm, I've ventured to say, let's put on our August agenda work session to have a conversation about how we want to set that up and how you want to go about putting applications out for people and what. And I think they should go to certain groups that are really active in that role too, as well as people who are just interested. So maybe the August work session, we could have some time with you two leading it, how do we want to set that up so that we can kind of plug and play what we're going to do. So we, in the next few months, when will that group meet? When you want to put out the applications and just how that process works. Would that be?
Would be good. And I'll, and I'll, I'll contact the collaborative board for the county. There's a loose collaborative board with NEMSCA and MMCA, Jo Jeanne Thompson and Tammy Firstby will be in that group. See if we can bring them together to work together for some, for some suggestions they may have and some opinions they may, they may have some opinions they can offer us.
Other than that, I think if that group, that will kind of fill those buckets or the, the next few months under that goal. Because I think there's going to be multiple things to address in that whole issue, especially with transportation and everything else that are going to kind of have to be working together. So, okay, I can make this adjustment.
Run across in there too.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind sending me this electronic copy that you did.
Yes, I will.
I'll clean that up and update it for the next meeting as well.
Absolutely. Any other comments on the strategic plan?
Let me just review that very bottom line. Underneath, we have year one priorities, year two, year three. So to be clear, for the rest of this year, it's our policy cleanup, budget review, and we've got to get that, you know, we'll have a new budget. Goals and review for our controller. We've already talked about acoustics, we've been continuing to make that, try to get that better every time. And the lake level management issues, those are the key things that are taking up the majority of our time today. And some of this we'll prepare for, but we'll have a stronger focus as we move into year two. Is that, am I hearing that correct?
Correct.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to mention, we may not get to the end of the policy cleanup by the end of the year. Some of these are getting quite lengthy now and it's going to require me meeting with administrator to see what has to be done to be updated, what possibilities there are, you know, like the personnel handbook is in there. It's a lot of pages and I don't know if we can review it and make any changes necessary in two meetings even.
Right. Any suggestions on what should be coming next? So Rex could start to think about those in the next month or two?
I had two others on the, but I, because of the auditor, I had to take two off. So there's two, two sitting on my desk waiting.
Okay, if you'll let me know those, I'll put them in the plan so we keep track of what we're looking at each month. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other comments on the strategic plan or updates? Next, under unfinished business is response to a couple of public comments that we had at our last regular meeting. One of the comments came from Mr. Craig Cotterman. He wondered about the Board's Open Meetings Act violation possibly in regards to this board on closing and opening the gates seeing as we were delegated authority for Houghton Lake. There is no violation, there is a lake level committee that is made up of two people. We watch the gauge in daily readings that come from Hi-Fi, including the graphs. The gauge that is used for the legal level is the one closest to the structure, just like the USGS gauge used to be, next to Old 27. Once we drop within our parameters, according to the manual which was approved by the Circuit Court, the first gate was closed. This information is then sent out to the entire board to let them know of the action that was taken. There is no private meetings happening, behind the scenes with a quorum of the commissioners. It is strictly based on the lake level people. Then there were claims also made that the legal levels were above the legal level as much as 8.25 inches. It was stated that we were not following the operations manual. In the meeting originally, the board made a statement, specifically Commissioner Wolfson, that Hi-Fi had made some wrong computations and the board was aware of this and we were in the process of getting the information fixed. The information provided in the email that went out to certain people, if you were signed up for that email, was the wrong information. Commissioner Wolfson also told everyone that the graphs were correct and that they could be used. Later that day, an email did come out from Hi-Fi explaining what had happened. Commissioner Wolfson had explained this to a few people, including Mr. Eric Ostergan, prior to the meeting. And still, we were told that we were not managing Houghton Lake properly. That was a false statement. The gauge that is used to measure the legal levels on Houghton Lake is by the structure. The USGS gauge used to be by Old 27. Therefore, the board has always chosen to use the one closest to the structure for the legal level. That is and has always been what we've done, along with the prior board when Hi-Fi was originally put in. And I have the following that can prove that the board did and has been managing the legal level properly and according to the operations manual. On June 6th, the first gate was closed on Houghton Lake. The reading was 1.98 feet, which means that we were 3.24 inches above the legal summer level. On June 7th, in the morning, a second gate was closed. It was, readings was 1.97 feet, which means we were 3.12 inches above legal level. On June 7th, in the evening, a third gate was closed, 1.97 feet, which means we were still at 3.12 inches above the legal summer level. On June 8th, a fourth gate was closed, 1.97 feet, which means we were still 3.12 inches above the legal summer level. On June 11th, a fifth gate was closed, 1.95 feet, which means we were 2.88 inches above the legal summer level. On June 12th, the final gate was closed at 1.93 feet, which means we were 2.64 inches above the legal summer level. On June 20th, a gate was opened at 2.06 feet, which means that we were at 4.2 inches above the legal level, so the gate was opened. On June 23rd, all gates were closed. We read 1.93 feet, which means that we were 2.64 inches above the legal summer level. As of yesterday, on June 24th, all gates are closed, 1.96 feet, which means that we were three inches above the legal summer level. In regards to another remark, referring to a point, in order to use that point, you must know how to calculate the proper values. I've compared the data from Hi-Fi, I have talked to the lake manager Chase Shupke, and at no time were there levels ever 17 inches above the legal level that were stated. There's a mathematical procedure that has to be done when using the reference point and it's obvious that that measurement was not done correctly. We have graphs dating back from June 6th through June 11th, the timeframe in which it's been referred to. And at the highest level over in Bayview Marina, it was 1.45 feet, which would have equaled 5.04 inches above the legal level. To say that there's no wave action in the first part of a statement and then to proceed to say the weight of the water due to the wind had overcome and pushed the water back out towards the lake is very counterdictory. This board has sat here meeting after meeting and has let false statements be made without correcting them. Not anymore. If you come up during public comment and make a false statement, an accusation about this board, this, about doing something that has not been done, it will be addressed in the next meeting.
Thank you.
Onto new business. There is none, so now we're on to motions and resolutions, whenever you are ready. Number one, move to rescind the affirmative action policy as adopted by board resolution on November 26, 1986 to maintain compliance with Section 26 of the Michigan Constitution, which states, "The state shall not discriminate against or grant preferential treatment to any individual or group on the basis of race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin in the operation of public employment, public education, or public contracting." Roscommon Counties continue to abide by Title VII of the 1964 Civil Rights Act.
Move, Madam Chair.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. We will always follow the law.
Roll call, please. Censor?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number two, move to rescind the civil rights policy as adopted by board resolution on August 14, 1989. All aspects of the Civil Rights Act are provided for in the Roscommon County Personal Policy Manual, deeming a separate policy redundant.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Morley?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number three, move to rescind the paid medical leave policy in occurrence, in, excuse me, concurrence with the Earned Sick Time Act, Revised Act 338 of 2018, which ended the Paid Medical Leave Act on February 20, 2025. Employees covered by collective bargaining agreements that include Paid Medical Leave Act requirements will not be subject to the rescinding until the existing agreement expires or is renewed, extended, or otherwise renegotiated.
Move.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Milburn?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number four, move to adopt the revised travel and employee expense reimbursement policy, see attached, effective June 25, 2025.
So move, Madam Chair.
Any discussion? Roll call? Morley?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number five, move to authorize Commissioner Rex Wolfson to enter into agreement on behalf of Roscommon County with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, Eagle Materials Management Division for the purpose of receiving $32,036 in grant funds in exchange for work to be performed on the Roscommon County Materials Plan. So moved. Do we have a? Any discussion?
Here. Rex, thanks for your work on this. I know you put a lot of time and energy in it. Thank you.
Roll call, please. Wolfson?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Motion carried. Six, move to authorize a change in Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, MMRMA, member status from state pool to individual, effective with annual policy renewal on July 1, 2025. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call? Morley?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number seven, move to authorize a one-time payment of $100,000 to be made to MMRMA for the purpose of funding Roscommon Counties MMRMA Individual Retention Fund. Funds shall be allocated from the Tax Payment Fund Special Projects balance of $270,000.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Censor?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number eight, move to appoint Amanda Winczinski to the Roscommon County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board for a three-year term beginning June 25, 2025 through October 31, 2028.
So move, Madam Chair.
Any discussion?
Just so noted, Amanda's in the audience today, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Morley?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Motion carried. Move to appoint Amanda Winczinski to the Roscommon County Economic Development Committee for a three-year term beginning June 25, 2025 through September 30, 2028. Second. Any discussion? Roll call? Milburn?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Motion carried. Committee reports. Commissioner Morley?
All right, well, this one will be a little shorter this week, for this meeting. On Friday, June 13th, I was invited by Colonel Lonsey, who is our new commander at Camp Grayling, to attend the annual pass and review, which I have gone to before. It's just a wonderful time to see our National Guard recognize those who have fallen, but also those who continue to serve. There's troops from all across the state who come. This year, our governor was not there to do the pass and review, but our Lieutenant Governor Gilkrich was there and did that as well. So it was just always a nice reminder of the people who served for our country. I was out of town for a week on business, so I did miss the Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Authority meeting, but had an update from the vice chair on some of the work that's going on there with their budget and the search for their new CEO. Still a lot of moving parts with that group right now. So there's a lot of committee meetings and things going on with them. June 24th, I was here the other day, spending some time in the county, talking to the different departments, saying hello, as well as a FOIA training just to make sure I'm a little bit more up to speed on what those rules and regulations are, what we can and cannot do. So that's my report for this time.
Okay. Commissioner Milburn?
I was also up at Camp Grayling last week, got to meet with some of the officers and some of the listed men up at the Officers' Club. It was a nice, nice gathering. COA went over to St. Helen to have lunch the other day. Wonderful, wonderful opportunity to enjoy that, that center. The COA paid off their final tally on the Whole Lake Center to the tune of $273,411.94. It was paid off on the 21st of May. In August, the first meeting in August, at the Whole Lake Center, at not, at short drive, they're going to, they're going to burn the proverbial mortgage. And I asked Shannon Fell from NMCA to come in front of the board in November, December, at the pleasure of the chair, to give a report and head start. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The agenda meeting and the Houghton Lake Improvement Board meeting, I was not able to attend, unfortunately. I had an emergency at the funeral home. We had some major electrical issues that prevented me from attending. I did attend the audit discussion that was on Friday, June 20th, along with our Administrator Controller, County Clerk, Register of Deeds, and Lieutenant Beck. As we all heard in the presentation before the full board today, we had a clean audit. And I attended a Zoom meeting on approaches to conflict and constructive dialogue that was hosted by MAC.
Commissioner Wolfson?
Yeah, I attended the Northern Michigan Counties Association. The biggest topic there was presented by Rich Castle from Consumers about getting rid of their 13 hydro power sites. They have 13 of these sites that they want to either sell or dismantle. Along with these sites goes 16,000 acres. They've had a cost estimate to bring these sites up to date. Two years ago, the cost estimate was $1.6 billion. So being how they only produce 1% of our power, they don't see that being cost effective. They'd like to sell these. They're licensed through 2020, 2032. If they sell them, the new owner would have to abide by the licensing through that period. And then after that, it's a whole new ballgame if they sell them. If they make a sale of these sites, the process will take one to two years. If they decommission them, it'll take up to 10 years to go through the whole process and cost $600 million just to decommission them. Right now, they have, I believe he said, two potential buyers. And they're talking with them and seeing what they can do with that. That was the big discussion. It can have some major impacts when you're talking like Hardy Dam. And if it's decommissioned, back to a river, what happens to all those businesses and homes on the waterfront?
Let it lose damage.
Because, and that's part of the 10-year process of decommissioning is, you know, how do they provide access to the water for them people yet? But it can be a huge impact. Now, even if they sell these, after 2032, the new buyers can enter into a new license agreement with the state and the federal government and continue operating them, where they could just decommission them. So the impact's going to be huge in the next, within the next 10 years.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just to address Commissioner Wilson, regardless of how they go, this is going to be a huge impact regardless, whether they're sold, which could, that person could eventually decommission themselves and cause problems on that end, right? But their initial goal right now is to try to get them sold and have them managed so that they're not decommissioned? Is that what they're trying to do?
Correct, but it'd only go through the licensing term, which I believe he stated was a 40-year term.
Okay.
And it ends in 2032. At that point, the new owner could decommission them, and they've got 16,000 acres to develop.
Lot.
Or whatever they decide to do with them. Kind of astounding, isn't it, Mark?
Yes.
But they said the price, the price they got to bring them up to date of 1.6 million, that price was calculated two years ago. So 1.6 billion dollars is just going on everybody's energy bill, being consumers. Anyway, that was a hot topic. That's it.
Port comment. Commissioner Morley.
I have a couple of follow-ups, but are you gonna talk in yours about your invite to DC?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then I won't bring that up, because that was quite an honor. So Jody, I had, we had talked, you had sent a message to Paul Campo about their need for their resolution for things that are going. Did we hear back? I haven't heard anything.
He was going to bring it to his board chair. And I know that you had talked about reaching out as well when you came back.
I can, I just didn't know if you'd heard anything or if I do need to take action.
It's going to be on their board meeting today.
Oh, okay. So are you anticipating him to reach out back to you with an answer after that? Or should I follow up tomorrow?
Let's both follow up, just to make sure.
All right, I can do that. And I got the information from Commissioner Wilson to give information back to Senator Hodinga's office to help us work through Eagle and try to expedite this process of the permits. So thank you for getting me that. I will follow up with them this week as well. I wanted to follow up on a comment that came from public comment last time. Can you guys hear me okay? All right. So Mr. Ostergrin made a comment that I was not listening to constituents. Well, let me shed a little light on constituents, the people that reside in this county. So this seat right here represents Garrish Township and Higgins Township. So Garrish has a little, almost 3,000 people. Higgins is a little over 2,000. So let's round that up to about 5,000 people just in those two townships. And if you think about Higgins Lake, which is where a lot of this comment comes from, most of that lake is within Garrish Township. There are 215 homesteads that vote here in Garrish Township on that lake. Rest of that is in Lyon, and there's about shy of 200 homesteads on that lake that reside here year-round and vote. Let's round it up, that's about 400 people out of 5,000 just in this district. And we have a county of 23,000 residents. So I think if you only talk to the people who paid you and got you involved, and only a small percentage, you are not listening to your constituents. I believe my job is to listen to all constituents. That's 23,000 people who live in this county. So if you, I don't come with one agenda. It's not the job of a commissioner in my mind, it's the county that we are to represent. So I did start to self-reflect. I'm like, you know, maybe there's something to be said for that. Why have we continued to drag this on for decades? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. Is it because you only want to be right and not really solve a problem? Is it we're always trying to point the finger at someone else or in the past and not self-reflect on what we can do to move forward and not continue to battle? Litigation only takes time. For us to be accused of not moving fast enough doesn't work, because it just drags it out. I've heard from everyone. I've heard from people who care about this lake and this group right here that comes every meeting, whether it's lake level or not, care. And if I haven't shown you that I care, I'm sorry, because I do. I've also heard from people who are tired of this county only focusing on the lake. Those are constituents too. They care about things. So I'm not here to prove to be right, because I don't believe there's a perfect right answer. And I've said that over and over. I'm here to try to solve the problem. And we can't keep kicking this can down the road. It's costing money. It's costing time and taking away from very critical things that go on in this county that many of you who come to meetings will hear about. So I just wanted to make sure that I said, if it doesn't sound like we care, I'm sorry, we will work on a tone that might make that feel better. But that is not the intent of myself, and I don't believe for the rest of the people on this board. So I hope that we all are self-reflective and think about how we can move forward instead of continuing to fight, because it's not making it any better. All I got to say, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Milburn?
That's a tough act to follow. This afternoon at 4 o'clock, Kim and I will be at District Health Dun and Claire. 8 o'clock tomorrow, I'll be with Brendan Economic Development. At 10 o'clock, I'll be with Darlene Animal Control. We do do other stuff other than lake levels. Go ahead, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay. I had the honor of attending the White House State Leadership Conference. The conference was hosted by the White House, the National Association of Counties, and the Michigan Association of Counties. This was the third time the White House has extended this invitation to individual states. And I am proud to share that Michigan was one of the only three states that were invited this year. During the conference, we heard from several White House Cabinet Secretaries, including Secretary Kennedy of Health and Human Services. He discussed, one of the many things that he discussed is how the tobacco industry had bought up the food companies years ago, how they began adding addictive additives to food to make people more addicted to them. And an example that he used was how they would add chew softeners to food. There is a signal in the brain that tells us when we're full. And that is determined, believe it or not, on how many times we chew. When they add a chew softener to food, it blocks that signal. We discussed the dyes and the oils that are not good for the health. He discussed why in other coun, and the question was, why in other countries, when you can read a label such as popcorn, there's only two ingredients. But that same bag of popcorn here in America has 11. We discussed, due to disease and overall health, that 75% of males today at the age of 18 would not qualify to serve in the military due to health reasons. 75%. Secretary Turner of Housing and Urban Development spoke. He focused on how they are refocusing on what the states need. He's negotiating two deals in Michigan and stated to keep an eye out for them. He did not elaborate. He also stated that $1.9 billion is missing from HUD during the Biden administration, and they can't find it. He's cutting the red tape that will make it easier for small communities to get the grants that are needed for housing and urban development. We heard from Secretary McMahone of the Department of Education. She spoke about the need to give the education back to the states. She clarified that only 10% of funding comes from the federal government. Secretary of Commerce made a surprise visit, Howard Lutnick. He spoke about re-industrializing America and that they will be starting in Michigan. He discussed tariffs and what they're designed to do. High tariffs are designed to bring back an industry, while low tariffs are designed for the revenue. 18% of America is currently owned by other countries. In May, the US took in $34 billion in tariffs in one month. Currently, the US does not produce its steel or aluminum anymore. And when you lose your ability to make these products, you lose the ability to defend your country. You're no longer able to make what you need in a time of crisis or war. We also had speakers from the Domestic Policy Council who discussed topics such as DEI, law and order, and welfare, waste, and abuse. They have lifted the Biden ban on law enforcement equipment from the Department of Defense, which means states and counties can now purchase this equipment once again. They are unleashing law enforcement to be able to do their jobs. They're looking at removing any rogue prosecutors that do not uphold the law. They're looking to enact the death penalty for child rapists and drug trafficking. Additionally, we had speakers from the Intergovernmental Affairs Office, the Department of Justice, the Department of the Interior, and the Department of Labor. The knowledge that was shared throughout the conference was truly priceless. It was a genuine honor and privilege to attend and be a part of this conference. And I was also able to connect with some of our local and state representatives while I was there. That's all I have.
I'd like to comment on Commissioner Morley's comment. It's easy to follow up on that, Mark. Ditto.
Do we have any public comment? Diane?
Diane's.
Good morning, how are you this morning?
Good morning.
Good. Hey, I just want to take this opportunity. At the township level, this past month, we've been working on our warrants. And that would be the tax assessor and the treasurer have to balance those taxable values from the March border review. Well, there's been a change with the BSNA system, so it was a bit challenging this year. So I want to take this opportunity to thank Jamie Hauserman, who came to my office, and also to thank Marcy Dankard, if she's still back there. Because we had, we questioned a lot of things. And I'm very proud of our treasurer, Mary Ann Hose, and I that we don't just push the button and take those figures. We understand what each one needs. So with Jamie's help and Marcy's help, we got it all. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I want to go, you're getting me all worked up. I'm already worked up. I'll lose my train of thought, is what I'll do. Craig Cotterman, Holton Lake. I see your board packed, and I believe the chairman, censor, she added her letter to the agenda. It seemed like, it seemed like she, you worked a long time on that letter. It's a couple, a couple pages, no?
No.
I imagine you had it before the meeting. You could have put it in the agenda.
No. I did it last night, Craig.
Anyway, you kind of like sprung it on us. I'd like to have a copy, of course. It is a written copy.
You can have this.
Pardon? We are answering questions, then?
No, I just said you can have that.
What was that?
The graphs, the proof.
Okay.
And as Chair, I can speak.
You read this off of?
My notes. I read it off my notes.
Have a copy of your notes. I had to forward that. You did a nice job. I believe some of the information is inaccurate. Again, why everybody's here is we're pursuing the truth. We need the facts. And the law keeps us in, it's our guideline. Commissioner Morley one time stated that, let's not hide anything. This is where I'm at. We have a board here that's acting as a designated authority. And I was surprised at this designated authority appointed, I believe. Censor and Wolfson, are you the two people on that? They're spokespeople now for the designated authority. I don't know if you had a meeting and decided that you two would now be the spokesperson or make the decisions for the designated authority. The last I heard, that the entire board was the designated authority. And now we have two that I believe are acting And now we have two that I believe are acting as a spokesperson or... Anyway, these decisions that are being made by the designated authority, whether it's to remove the East Bay site or take it offline, or the decision to use the site closest to the dam, which sets actually right on top of the, you know. I think Prinna Newhoff said, "The more gauge you open, the lower, the lower that gauge reads." And all along, I believe there's been a discrepancy in your gauges. East Bay always read a couple inches higher. Last night, I was out at the control structure, and most all the boards seemed to be in. It's pretty hard to tell whether they're all the way down or... But there was a lot of water. I was surprised at the amount of water going through the dam, whether it was going underneath where it's undermined or along the sides. With all the, with all the boards in the dam, there was still only about a foot of downstream relief between the freeboard, I believe you'd call it. On the way home, I did stop at the USGS site. There's a stick there, a USGS gauge. The gauge is a 1988 datum. And I took my binoculars out. I read the gauge at 1138.4. USGS, 1988 datum. Your datum at the dam is a 29 datum. The court ordered legal banking, or the legal, how much water you can bank, is an 88 datum. I don't know why you want to use 29 datum at the dam site and use, compare it to the judge's decision on 88 datum. It's confusing. There's really no need for it. Unless, of course, you're trying to confuse people like me, I'm not sure. But I get confused easily. You're managing a very complicated system, the largest inland lake in Michigan, one of the most diverse ecosystems probably anywhere in the world. It's also the most studied ecology in the world, volumes of data. And it's too complicated for me to manage. You say time? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ostergren. Eric.
Eric Ostergren, Gary Township, for a few more days. Anyway, I want to express my deep concern regarding the current direction of our board. I had hoped that the commitment earlier this year to transparency, honesty, and openness was real. However, your recent actions suggest a troubling departure from those principles. Despite your claims for striving for transparency, the decision to eliminate live Zoom access to meetings is disappointing. Many townships in Roscommon are now, are newly leveraging such technology to keep their communities informed, yet you have chosen to move backwards and discontinue using Zoom, which restricts public access. This move raises serious concerns about your commitment to open dialogue and public oversight. Additionally, the decision to eliminate water level measurement sites is equally concerning. This step appears to be aimed at reducing public scrutiny and seems to perpetuate a pattern of secrecy within our governance. What's the impact of eliminating water level reporting sites? The removal of lake reporting sites is alarming. It is essential to have multiple reporting locations for accurate water level management on Higgins and Houghton since they are so large, Michigan's other great lakes. During my tenure as a commissioner, Chemki Consulting set up several measuring sites on Higgins and Houghton to gather vital data. We found that water levels could vary by as much as six inches due to wind effects and the locations of springs and outlets, and inlets. Without measuring multiple sites, managing water levels effectively becomes increasingly challenging. Michigan's other great lakes, Higgins and Houghton, are expansive bodies of water, and their levels can vary significantly from one end to the other. Currently, Houghton's single measuring device is located at the northwest corner, while Higgins' single measuring device is at the southwest. This positioning means that prevailing northwesterly winds can cause one end to experience higher levels, while the other end is lower. Relying on a single measurement point could lead to mismanagement of water levels across both lakes. Here's the case for more measuring sites. Eliminating the number of measuring devices complicates the effective management of our lakes. Historical data shows that relying solely on one measurement point is inadequate for proper water level oversight. It is logical to install devices at both ends of the lakes and average the readings in making decisions about gauge operations. We aim to enhance, if we aim to enhance dam management, restoring and implementing additional measuring devices is essential for accuracy and efficiency. More information leads to better decision-making, and without it, we risk overlooking critical factors in our lake management strategy. For instance, your recent decision to eliminate the water level management device at Bayview Marina, located on the southeast corner of Houghton, has raised flags. This device constantly reported higher water levels than the one at Houghton Dam, which is already above the legal limit. This situation raises concerns about your intent to suppress information that does not align with the commission's prevailing narrative. I urge you to engage some real strategic planning to manage the water levels on Michigan's other great lakes effectively. This board is the delegated authority, and the lake manager takes direction from you. Directing our lake manager to publish and utilize comprehensive data in managing the levels will not only enhance transparency, but also ensure responsible stewardship of our valuable water resources. Doing otherwise will raise suspicions. Just because the levels have been managed with one measuring device in the past, an excuse to not utilize two devices per lake. Just because one gauge is and always has been done that way doesn't mean it's the best way. After all, Roscommon is the home of Michigan's other great lakes. In regard to Commissioner Morley's comments, the reason this has been dragged on for decades is because this commission hasn't done the job. There's a saying that applies here: You're confusing activity with results. So far, there aren't any results. I look forward to hearing from your response in the next meeting. Thank you.
Any other public comment? With no further public comment, this meeting is adjourned. The next one will start at one.
Feltations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Morley. Milburn.
Here.
Russo. Wolfson. Censor. Here. Approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Second, any discussion? Roll call. Wolfson. Morley.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Censor. Yes. Public comment.
Okay. Can we put in the notes crickets?
Yeah. New business: The Roscommon County 2025 Budget Review. No, you're good.
Oh, I forgot to do my little PowerPoint. So this is as of May 31st, 2025, to give a good full accounting of five months, making any corrections. This also includes all of the audit adjustments that were provided to Marcy and myself by Tyler on Monday. So that way that as I'm looking forward at any of the fund balances, those are all correct, and any transfers that need to be made, any reconciliations. He talked a lot about accounts receivables. Those are backed out and then brought into cash. So all of that's included in there. So the review summary to date includes 41.37% complete for our fiscal year, which is January through December, for all of those in the audience. It includes 11 of 26 pay periods being completed, which equals 42%, so you can keep that in mind when we look at payroll. Six of 12 benefit payments and that fully funded HSA that we did at the beginning of the year. The general fund allocations for landfill, MIDC, childcare fund, and the airport are not yet completed. I do those first half in June and the second half at the end of December for a couple of reasons. The first is we always have cash, but we don't always have cash in the general fund. So until we start to get some more cash flowing in from when we send out taxes, I try not to send that into a negative balance. Marcy would probably not panic as much because she'd look at the overall. Rebecca hated it when I did that. So I do that, that first half of the transfer in June. And then in December, what I will look at is, just as a, for instance, if this year for 2024, they did not need the full allocated amount by the general fund. So childcare fund, hundreds and some odd thousand dollars less had to be transferred to them because their expenses were not warranting a full transfer over. So then in December, I do that at the end as well. The animal control program expenses include the full heating and cooling upgrades, which, just as to remind you from the presentation, I think, gosh, that was like back in November, is almost $500,000. So you will see their expenses quite high for that as well. But DeeDee did just turn in the last bill for that today, so we will even out now across the board. All of our funds and departments currently or at or below their budgeted expenses. Revenues for all of our major general funds are trending at our traditional pre-summer collection levels. So going back and looking at, you know, where we were in '24, '23, '22, and backwards. Is this normal for us? Are we low? Fund balance post-audit. So as I mentioned during the audit presentation, just for everybody to remember, that we may end the year at a 22% fund balance, but because you are looking at it as a percentile of what your expenditures are, that actually will leave us for a January 1 fund balance of 20.86 as we're coming into this year. Now, one of the things that I included in here that I just want to point out, the board did approve a policy that essentially stated that anything above 18% will be moved into the capital improvements boards by the second meeting following the audit. So I will put that on for the work session for discussion, but I just wanted to point out to you. So our beginning fund balance dollar amount is obviously the same as our ending 2024. Our budgeted revenues and expenses would leave us with an estimated ended fund balance if we fall right on revenues and right on expenditures of $2,358,426.82, which would put us at the 20.86%. Our 18% fund balance goal, based on those budgeted expenditures for the year, is $2,354,6217. Obviously, if you're looking at the end, this end of 2025 fund balance, we would be over $322,964.65. If you look at, and this is the line, this is the line that'll be important when we have the discussion, when the board has the discussion in regards to the transfer of money into the capital improvement fund, $131,847.02 is actually the difference between what our 2025 general fund 18% should be based on our budgeted expenses and what we are starting the year with.
Question.
Yes, sir.
You say county's fund balance. It's interior money we have available for things that crop up.
Emergencies, yes.
Then we have this list of everybody.
Yes.
Is the county's fund balance a total of all these?
No. I'm getting there. So this is just 101. This is just fund 101. So this is the one that funds all of our courts, funds all of our statutory duties, support duties, your equalization, your IT. So this is the one that covers all of those things, covers the transfers to the childcare fund, which tends to be one of our biggest that has cropped up in the last decade and bitten us in the butt by not having enough money. If for some reason, all of a sudden, we end up needing something that we don't have budgeted for, like the roof caves in or something of that nature, that's where that money comes from. So it's just 101. It's just our general fund, which is our biggest bucket. On the next slide, the other ones, the fund balances post-audit. So these are actually all of our special funds. So this is everything that's not included in the general fund. So Special Road Millage Fund is, that actually is the village that goes to the local townships. Special Road Patrol Fund, that's your 207. That's going to be your sheriff's road patrol fund. Animal Control Program Fund is your animal shelter and your animal control officer fund. Front of the Court is 215. Specialty Court is the grant. That's the one that we did actually. Are waiting for them still to get that reimbursement back, and then we will take our money back that we had to loan them, so they weren't in the negative for the year. Opiate Settlement Fund, that is our current balance of that money that's been coming into us for now. Landfill is exactly what it sounds like. We actually allocate to the landfill every year as well because we're going to be monitoring that now for PFAS, which will end up probably coming back and needing more money. God bless PFAS. Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Marcy sits on that board, and that is their, their little bit of money that they got allocated during EDC for, from EDC projects in the ARPA money. The EDC Special Projects Fund, that's the money they have left available to them to continue operating. So that is ARPA money as well that was given to them that they have left to continue their operations. The Automation Fund is actually our clerk's automation fund. So that's the fund balance. The M. Cole CPE Training Fund, that is actually a new fund where the state is giving money directly to the sheriff's office for sending people through the program to become certified officers. Indigent Defense Fund, MIDC. 911, actually, they have one, they have one fund balance, but it's divided into two. So they actually have a certain amount set aside for a fund balance for capital improvements. And then they have an additional fund balance that's just your everyday normal fund balance. Concealed Pistol Licensing Fund, that also belongs to the clerk's office. Law Library, everybody's favorite, so they started off 1,060 to the good this year. Juvenile Justice Fund is inclusive of this is funding that comes in. They get, essentially, they get like a 10% money for indirect costs that they are allowed to use for things related to juvenile justice, counseling, support services, those types of things. Plus, this is a grant that they get to fund one full juvenile probation officer as well. Childcare Fund, everybody loves that one. There's your Spongey Moth. Veterans Capital Improvement, that's our new one, and the Airport Fund that starts over. So those are all of their beginning January 1 post-audit fund balances. So everybody has a little bit of something in the bank, some more than others.
Sorry.
Yeah. No, no.
So the 911 has their own capital improvements fund?
That is correct. Yep.
So as we're thinking about if we're a total over 18, all that money goes to capital and they have to do their own? I mean...
They've got their own, yes.
They've got their own?
Yep.
Question.
I'm back.
As of January 1, example Sheriff Patrol.
Okay.
That's how much money they have to spend through the year?
No, that is how much money that they have...
They have saved over the year?
Saved, yes.
Fund.
Correct. Yep. With a budget of about like $2.7 million.
As I look at this page, there's millions of dollars here setting around, right?
Well, you say setting around, but...
No.
So the fund balance that we're looking at...
Not being utilized, let's say that.
Go ahead.
If you need to answer, it's okay.
No, no, go ahead.
So this sheet is just the fund balance. This is not their budget. It's not what they've spent. This is like their, just like in our school district. Part of your fund balance is also, if the doors close tomorrow, you have to have so much money in the bank to pay out your people, to pay out all this. That is a part of the fund, not just for capital improvement.
That is correct. Right.
You've got to keep all that in play on how much money you need to keep in a fund balance, correct?
And I can, yes. So when you look at a couple of the different funds that I'll point out that I've learned a few things about through the years, Spongey Moth is probably a really good one. We used to have almost a million dollars in the Spongey Moth fund balance, just in their fund balance, in their savings account. We had one year about four or five years ago where we ended up spraying almost $890,000 because we sprayed three-fourths of the private-owned property.
Wow.
And it's out the fund balance. If we had not had the fund balance, we wouldn't have been able to do that. So that would be, or you'd be bonding for it or something of that nature. But odds are, you just wouldn't spray at that point.
Does that fund balance, now that you're talking about that, does that have to get used for all their expenses? Or was this just, we had to do extras, we had to take it out of fund balance?
We had to do, well, so we wouldn't have had enough. You will never have enough. You would have to, we figured out that you would have to have a mill of like, to spray all the privately. And you would have to have a mill, like a six mills to spray all privately and in Roscommon County for Spongy Moth annually.
We don't...
No, we collect a .25.
Like .25?
Yep. So that's about 240,000. Nope, that's why you put a little bit. When you don't need it, you put it into the fund balance. Sheriff's Road Patrol and Veterans would be another two that I would say. Those are operations that our county residents, constituents, and us have come to count on and rely on. If their millages were to not pass, then their fund balance is what they would have to operate off of until they could...
Get it passed.
Get it passed again, or hopefully get it passed again. And a good example of that would be Midland actually had their, not Midland.
Home Pleasant?
Home Pleasant, thank you. So they did not have a millage renewed. They did not have a fund balance to operate in continuation. Therefore, it was an immediate layoff of, there is no road patrol now.
Is its fund balances dedicated?
They cannot be used for anything other than that specific fund. Yep. So you can't cross. We can give everybody money, but they can't give us money. We're like...
But I mean, like, in the sheriff's department example, that money's sitting there in case their millage doesn't pass? Or can they spend it on anything they want?
They can't spend it on anything they want.
Yes, doesn't it have to be tied to the language of the millage?
Well, yeah. But I think what Rex is saying is if they decide that they all of a sudden want to purchase seven ducks, then they go out and dip into their fund balance for a fleet of ducks. No, that would come as a budget adjustment and a change in their budget. And therefore, they would be coming forward to ask for that.
So the fund balances set aside, emergency type thing?
Yes. Yep. And if they want to dip into their fund balance to make purchases off of it, then under, under the policies, they have to come through, well, just in general for accounting purposes and financial management of counties and local governments, they would need to have that approval before they could do into it because they've got to follow their budget. And otherwise, they're going over their budget. Now, they can certainly budget to go into their fund balance. Veterans actually has included a line in their budget, which is a specific spend down of their fund balance because they wanted people to see. They hired their, their other secretary that's in there after Lori left to fill that position and have been utilizing their fund balance to operate. But they keep that as a separate line item, and it was approved in their budget to spend. They put it in there as a, as an allocation for it. But yes. So revenues to date, this is, this type, this type of year, this is always one of my least favorite ones. We are currently on the 2025 budget for our general fund at 23.12%. We're about a percent and a half below last year. No real major reasons for it. I can give you a couple, a couple examples of things that haven't fully come in yet. If we are looking at, the treasurer's office makes a transfer annually. And I included in your department one because I thought it, but, but that's not included in the overall funds that we have. There is money that comes in for, to supplement off of interest that they make. There's money that comes in from the drain district interest. Now, there's an admin fee that gets transferred, a 5% admin fee that gets transferred in. And those things haven't happened yet. So that right there is probably $350,000 that you would be off. Some of the other things that we haven't received reimbursements for, we get reimbursements every month for the judges' salaries from the state. We haven't gotten those three reimbursements in yet. And that's about $50,000 altogether that we would get in. So as things like those lag behind, that kind of makes up that, that difference that we're looking at for there. The rest of them are all actually looking really good. Our Specialty Courts, like I said, is still awaiting that last reimbursement to come back through from them. One of the recommendations that did come out during that process, when we had the audit exit interview, was that Tyler wants me to have access to the Specialty Court grant online. So I can see when has, has everything been posted, when is our money coming through. So I can actually track those, especially with the, you know, the changeover and the, the air that has come out. So I have reached out to the Specialty Court Administrator and to judge and just said, hey, this is what I need. How do I get it? I just need read-only access. I don't want to mess anything up. So that is one of those areas. Counseling service, which is, which is low, I don't really even bother with because we don't actually use that for anything. That is just a certain statutory fee when things get charged that come over into that account. Front of the Court, one of the reasons that they're low is because I have not allocated any money over to them from that apportionment yet. Other areas that you're going to see, the MCOL CPE Training Fund, we have not received that money because we have not signed anybody up yet for the August classes. So we actually have to have a candidate and somebody committed to us before they send us that money. Indigent Defense, we have to spend down that fund balance first before the state will reimburse us for anything. So we don't have any money in there. Some of the other areas that look a little low are in the same boat as that, but all your larger ones, your Special Road Millage, your Sheriff Road Patrol, animal, animal control programs, emergency management, 911 Central Dispatch, those are all taxes that have been collected. So for the most part, what you're seeing is just these smaller, smaller bits of money that fall into their budgets, like for FOIA's or collections or reimbursement from the Holton Lake Schools for the sheriff's office, having that person in there. So that's where you see those shortages in there.
Can you explain the counseling services that you said that's really, we don't use that? Or what is it?
So, yes. So that is not really an us fund. It's really a court fund. It is tied directly to Circuit Court. They can use it through front of the court. They can use it through family court. And it is, if they so deem that there is a need for a special assignment, maybe one-on-one counseling for a family, or they can utilize that money and pay for, for that kind of specialty. So it's exactly what it sounds like, counseling services. But it's tied directly to front of the court and family court.
It's funded for, from $15 of a marriage license cost.
Okay.
Every marriage license that's sold, $15.
That's how we got the 1,800 bucks or whatever in his revenue.
Yes.
That's a lot of marriage licenses in a year, though.
Yeah.
You're normally pretty close.
Well, that helps me understand where the revenue's coming.
Yes.
And if that is $1,800, but no one's actually requested that or used that at this point, is what you're saying?
Correct. Yep. We have had one year where Family Court did ask to utilize that to work with a couple, to have a transfer in of about, can't remember what the fund balance was at that time, but it was about 1,500, just to use for some, a couple of the families in one of the local school districts that were noted as need. So to try to offset that and tie it back in too.
And that's the only revenue is through the marriage license?
That's it. That's all that comes in. Yeah. That is one of those. And Michelle, Michelle has several of them through things that she collects. But that is one of those items where the statute says you're going to collect this fee, and for this fee, you can keep 20%, 15% goes here, $15 goes here, and the rest goes here.
Okay.
Yep. That's actually her, the Automation Fund and the CPLs run in the same figures as well. Which one? Oh, that was me. So if we look at, oh, CPLs on the next list. I cut it off because it was so small. So for Funds 101 through 261, yeah, that was only page one. Just a little graph, just to show you kind of where everybody is with our revenues to date. This is the one that I said doesn't look as pretty unless it's in grayscale. But that just gives you an idea where the first half of the funds are as far as their budget to total to date. And we'll lag behind, but we'll catch up here when Marcy gets to start collecting money. Now, we're going to go, oh, there you are, Michelle. So our next set of revenues, 263 through 841. Next time, there'll be some additions on there now that I know why it didn't show up on the sheet. The Concealed Pistol Licensing, that's another one of Michelle's special funds. Correction Training Fund is another one where...
I can't, I'm sorry. I can't think about that. I'm trying to listen to her do the budget. Well, okay, I'll, I'll deal with that after I finish paying attention to the budget. Because that's where my mind is.
Squirrel. So the Correction Training Fund is a set percent of the booking fees that we actually are able to collect in the jail, go into the Corrections Training Fund. And then that is specifically used for corrections officers training. Traditionally, what it has been used for is when we hire in somebody for a corrections position to send them to the two-week training, to be, to become a certified corrections training officer. And then it has also been utilized for, recently for some of the newer trainings as related to mental health. Law Library, we all love. Most of that money comes from us. There is some, my favorite, penal fine money that gets transferred over on an annual basis, but it's not enough. Juvenile Justice, they're, they're already exceeding what they already anticipated. We got a little bit more in grant funding. The County Housing Programming Income Fund and the administrative funds for those. The income fund builds up off of what people pay on the money that they've owed for the last 30-plus years. That's a whole nother thing that we'd have to get into someday. But essentially, the county took on, took on loans from, I don't even think it was HUD back then. The money was ours if they could loan it out to people to build houses, to buy houses. So in instance, we actually own houses. And then when people are done paying them off to us, it's their house. It's their deed. So that comes forward for that. The other line item that's associated with that, the administrative fund, there's a certain amount of money when we have processed some of the specific housing grants that we are allowed to capitalize and collect for that. And so that's where that goes into. That one is used mostly for two purposes now. The first one is obviously when there are deeds that are closed out or information or tax searches that need to be done on a property, we are still paying for those because by statute, we have to pay for them. So that is where that traditionally comes out of. And then we also use that money to pay the Crawford County housing that we partner with when that's in there. So. Commission on Aging, that is an in and an out. Our treasurer's office always leaves a little bulk of money in there just to make sure, because sometimes they zero it out and they end up having to pay money back to us or pay money back on taxes, when we end up having to pay people back for taxes. So there's always a little bit left in there. Childcare Fund, the revenues to date are simply what we have received back from the state. Spongy Moth is all millage collections. Veterans Affairs is millage collections, capital improvements. We did not have a budget for that. So for instance, this will be one that we end up having to do a budget adjustment for because we did not set a budget for that. If we leave it, that'll show us a negative at the end of the year. Animal Shelter Special Projects, they, this is where all the money goes, where people say, we are leaving you this in our will, and it is only to take care of cats for.
Can we back up one since we're on it? And you, if you're going to talk about it later, just tell me. So the capital improvements, we didn't budget for anything, but we've, we have 119 in already?
So at the end of, at the end of 2024, there was a set amount of administrative funds that had not been budgeted for that our outgoing treasurer at the time gifted basically to create a capital improvement fund. I guess that's kind of her legacy was to start that fund for us utilizing that. It's money that could have been kept within the treasurer's office, but this was the gift. So now, now that we have the policy that says, you know, anything above 18%, we'll be able to build on that to, to move forward. But I don't know budgeting for that.
That was my next question.
Ideally, we'd love to be over or under, you know, or we'd love to be over 18%, but that is, that's a hard thing to budget for. So that's one of those ones that essentially, there was no budget set for it. So we will have to go back and say, okay, now that we know that we have put money in there, we need to set a budget so we don't get in trouble with the state at the end of the year.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. That helped me.
So the airport's budget, obviously, that looks huge. But that'll end up being with ins and outs of that grant funding that comes through for their special projects. Commissary Inmate Trust Account. So this can only be used for those things that are related to inmate care. That's the best way I can think of it. Essentially, this is the difference between what we pay for commissary stuff that they can get, well, what they pay and what we're charged. And it goes into, it goes into this fund. Total to date is really high. And the main reason for that is they are selling the NIC patches now and the NIC pouches that come in. And that has sent, that has sent their profitability through the roof. One of the nice things about the commissary inmate trust account is it saves us in some areas from the general fund. For instance, there's a Safety and Security Board panel that has been ordered and is going to be replaced. The total cost of that is about $270,000. That is being purchased by the jail, jail administrator out of the commissary inmate trust account. So that saves any money we have from the general fund. That would have pulled out of the general fund fund balance to pay for because we wouldn't have known we needed it. And obviously, the last three are Higgins Lake, Holton Lake, and Lake St. Helen Special Assistance Assessment Districts. We have spent money out of Higgins Lake, but we didn't budget for that one. So that'll be another one that we'll have to look at. And then Holton Lake and Lake St. Helen obviously have exceeded what we thought we would spend this year as far as fund revenues coming in. And then another funny, pretty graph.
SAD, you've spent it more than we thought.
Yeah.
You need to...
I don't want to say all of our lawsuits. I think that a direct result of some of the things that we've spent on, we have spent a total of them. When we run through the fund expenses, I'll show you. But we didn't, we didn't anticipate bringing any revenues into Higgins Lake. There hadn't been any discussions by the board as far as moving forward with the SAD and the collections. So once we know what that number looks like, I will put it on a list of budget adjustments for you guys to move forward with. What we have spent year to date, and I'd have to look, I'm going to say it's right around like eight or 9,000. That has been directly related to the permitting that we are looking for, payment to Shepkey Consulting for some, some small portions that they have, that they have provided to us. And honestly, some of the things we're doing are directly a result of people suing us. Oh, well, now we're going to have to ask for this on the permit because...
That's why I got this. Expenses can be...
As long as it's directly related to...
themselves.
Themselves and their neighbors. Yes. Yes. So then our fund expenses to date, again, you're looking at like 41%. And for the most part, everyone is, is falling pretty well in line. The ones that look really large are the EDC Special Projects and Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. But Brownfield's only over by $313.75. It's just, there was only 1,000 budgeted. And then the EDC Special Projects, the $99,94508 is actually, there was $50,000 moved out of their fund balance. It's still in their fund balance. But for accounting purposes, it was moved out of their fund balance, and it is actually in a CD investment that they worked with our treasurer to authorize and have happened. So they're trying to grow their 4% interest off of that to have a little bit money to move forward with as well. Obviously, your animal control program, their expenses are up significantly right now, but that is those large, that large impact. but that is those large, that large impact. And that was approved in their budget, so they will see, they've just spent it all at once. So, you will see that. Our general fund, to date, we're right at about thirty-eight point three, which, considering where we are with payroll and benefits payments and retirements payments, par for the course for the year, is actually right where we should be. So, we're just a teeny bit lower. But, being that this was based on five thirty-one and everything has been inputted, it's looking really good. So, you will see the landfill go up this summer because this is when we go out and literally, so maintenance goes out to the landfill. Does everybody know where the landfill is?
No.
You've probably passed the road to it. So, as you're heading on eighteen towards the animal shelter, it's Russell Lake Road to the left.
Oh, okay.
And you drive down like you're going back to the, who is that, Reeve Riley pits back there? And Reeve Riley like goes this way, and our road goes this way, there's a little gate across it. You literally go out there and there are two pump houses. And you flip the pumps, pumps on, you run it until it pulls everything out, and then you call the company to come and get it. We pay to have them get it, and we pay to have them test it. And that is- They probably do. Under bottled water. But yes, so, that is where the landfill is. If you go out there and you walk around, please wear boots because there's, the big black snakes are out there.
Oh, lovely. So, under the EDC Special Projects, you said that they took some money out of their fund balance, about fifty grand. It just hasn't been adjusted for yet.
Correct.
And how does that get adjusted and when? How does that work?
So, so how it works is, their fund balance actually shows, they've only got, basically, their fund balance is forty-five thousand. It does not include the CD, which is a totally separate line item that comes into them. So, when we pull out a balance sheet, if I pull a full balance sheet for you, you'll see the CD line item show up there. So, CD, fund balance, cash, that would all equal out.
And then, it, when they mature it or whatever, the process of balancing these out happens after that?
Yes, Marcy and, Marcy says this is what we're doing, and I need to take this interest and deposit it into- Yep, so then, they'd have a revenue line item with the interest in there that comes through. This is where Marcy and I keep each other in line. Indigent Defense, we are actually a little busier this year with them appointing indigent defense than last year, but a portion of this comes from the types of cases that we have. The other portion of this, and if you've ever had the opportunity to talk to Prosecutor Edwards, he will talk about this a lot, is there is a lot of, there's a lot more usages of special investigators and witnesses and experts that are being utilized to support the defense for the indigen at this point. Or pretty little graphs. The next fund expenses to date. Oh, you're okay. On the next fund expenses to date, we basically are looking at a pretty similar trend. Our County Housing Program Income Fund, we have actually already exceeded what we hoped to have been able to lend out for the year. So, we will definitely be doing a budget adjustment on that at the end of the year. There should be more program incomes funds coming, but that will not come until the end of August if the federal government approves it. So, we'll see if that changes or not. Some of the other areas that, that look fairly high, again, your Commission on Aging, that is an in or out. Their millage is, is a winter millage, so that money has already been collected and dispersed to them for the year. Childcare Fund is trending really well for now. They tend to get a little bit busier in the summer when kids don't have that much to do, but hmm. That was very kind of you, yes. As some of the processes come through. Obviously, the commissary inmate trust account is higher than budgeted before because they added on the purchase of those NIC patches and pouches, and so, their expenses have increased because of that. A lot was way off on Higgins Lake. I think it's probably total eight thousand to date, but. So, so far this year, on Higgins Lake, we have expended three thousand five twelve fifty. The Holton Lake, we have expended three hundred fifty-six thousand two twenty-six nineteen. We budgeted for the full cost of the project on that one. The same is for the Lake St. Helen SAD, is budgeted for the full cost of the project, the designing, ninety-seven thirty-five fifty-seven to date on that one. Overall, fund-wise, we are at thirty-six point six percent for the year. The next couple of slides are specific just to the general fund, since this is the biggest, biggest area and number of departments that we, we have to look at. This very first one, zero zero primary, that is essentially your, I wanna call it a catch-all, but this is, this is very general to funds that come in that are for the whole county expenses. The taxes, the excess tax for marijuana that's allocated to counties now for collections, your state revenue sharing, this is where you see the liquor tax money come through. You have some of the other, some of the other different taxes that come through, swamp tax shows in there as well. And several of those are in and outs. But, this is where we record that general kind of bulk of the revenues that come into us. And you'll see that that is a, a large portion of our money. That is also where our ad valorem tax is collected and placed as well. So, when you see a budget of eight million, knowing that six million of that is, is that ad valorem tax as well as it stands on there. Board of Commissioners is, if you ever wondered what your revenue money is, there are a couple of the meetings that you go to that, because your salaries years ago were voted in at the rate, at the salary rate they're at, basically, the decision was made, we're gonna, instead of keeping those individual per diems, they come back to the county. So, I believe that's actually Darlene's, it's Darlene's or Mark's? Both of them, yeah, that, that those come back to the county for those. And it only counts for in-person meetings too. Jury Commission, that's the reimbursements that we get for that as it comes back through, and those always seem to lag. So, our jury, our jury usage is up? If we get more revenue, it just means we've spent more. Do you know what the percentage rate is on that reimbursement? Cause it's not a hundred percent.
We only get, uh, Christiane wasn't here. No, I know, I get it, like, I do a report, cause I have to go in and enter in the number of half-days that are utilized and the mileage, and we do not get the full mileage, we do not get, like, I think we pay twenty-eight cents a mile, we get reimbursed ten cents a mile. And then, for the jury, we get, I don't remember, I'll have to look that up.
That statute has not kept up with the times. Animal Controller Revenue, that's all FOIA that comes through. We just got three dollars and twenty-eight cents more though, from Mr. Cotterman, so that's lovely. So, that's where that comes through, and the more we do with lakes, the more money I get for FOIAs. So, there is a positive to that, doesn't really offset everything. Clerk Register of Deeds, just entering your busy season, I guess is the best way that I can put it. But she is already at forty percent, so. Our MIS and our IT, their fifty-three dollars and ninety-five cents was a reimbursement that we got for assisting Northern Michigan Children's Assessment Center. So, they're excited they have revenue even though they didn't budget for it. Survey in Fremont is, we get, we get installment, we get an installment payment, and then we get a final reimbursement payment. There's a set amount that the state gives us for that every single year, which is forty-seven eight sixty-eight. In addition, there's this little teeny tiny amount that gets transferred over from Michelle's office under statute. And that comes in as well, but hey, every, every bit counts, so. The Mailroom and the Xerox. So, the Mailroom is actually a reimbursement that we get for any mailings that special funds do. Friend of the Court reimburses us on a regular basis. And then, this is actually mailings that were sent out to Gypsy Moth that they ran through our postage machine and then shipped us back in. That's another one of those ones that's really hard to budget for, cause if you have a really big Gypsy Moth year, then you get a lot of money back for postage, but you've also spent it, so. Other Services, Xerox Room. This is, we have, we buy the bulk paper, and we have two townships that actually will call us locally, and they come and they purchase the paper from us because we save, you know, two bucks on a box of paper, basically, from them. So, Garrish is the one that does it the most consistently, but that is where that revenue comes in for. The other portion of that is the money we get from vending machines, and that'll go up here shortly. We just gave a whole bunch of money to Marcy to deposit the other day. Right, Marcy? Treasurer's Office, so, so about three hundred of this is that money that transfers over and into. And so, that's right at about seventy-three. The rest that you're going to see come through this is going to be PRE collections, funds that come back if there has to be any reimbursements back to the Treasurer's Office for assistance as well, and then interest on certain, certain funds as well. Equalization Department is actually trending a lot better than last year, I'll be honest, but this is fully due to the inclusion of GIS sales in here. Elections is another one, we'll end up having to, having to do a budget adjustment for, is that falls in? But that is, because somebody decided to have a, sorry, an election.
Isn't this, isn't this eleven thousand eight thirty-eight from the grant reimbursement? Cause I haven't done the, I haven't gotten, I haven't gotten the reimbursement from the school election yet.
But then, you haven't done a budget adjustment yet.
Right.
Yes. Yes.
So, if they paid us, that money would go into there as revenue? Any resolution on that? I haven't heard from anybody on-
They have never followed up with me.
Okay. Good to know.
Despite several emails asking if there's anything else I could do.
Got it, thank you.
Buildings and Grounds, they did have the sale of the one truck. And then, their additional revenues would come in for any type of like safety grants that they might apply for as well. Soil erosion is trending just a little bit higher this time last year, they were right at about fourteen-five. So, we're still seeing active, active soil erosion permits that come through. Circuit Court has actually had several ten percent bond retentions that have been reported in the last few months, so that's kind of a nice thing. And those are those fees and fines for all of your courts. Those are gonna be your fees and your fines that they are structurally allowed to collect at this point as well. Few little revenues. As you can see, a majority of those revenues have come in from primary, and then, the other two that you'll see that there are kind of significant more for revenues at this point are your Clerk Register of Deeds and your Treasurer, Treasurers based off of this slide. The rest of our general fund revenues by departments that have come through. So, obviously, Central Services, that is our shared services. We are awaiting another forty thousand dollars in reimbursements from Oghama County that was submitted to them, so that is where that revenue comes from, is the reimbursement of Oghama County's half. District and Municipal Courts. We give the bill straight to Danielle, so it gets paid in a very timely manner. So, we already have our reimbursements from Oghama County under District Services. The District Municipal Court will be all of their same fines and fees that they are collections from that. Crimes Victim Advocate is a grant that we receive. That grant actually runs, their grant period runs from October through September, and we essentially get the full wages and benefits along with the cost of, basic cost of running a crime victims advocate office out of the prosecutor's office. So, that one is right at about fifty percent right now as well. Administration is not my office, that is actually Sheriff's Administration. They bring money in from certain reimbursements. They also have money that comes into them from their prescription pill drop-offs as well. Sting is a really hard one to explain. Marcy, so, eight hundred years ago, we went into an agreement with Sting, and essentially, that agreement said that for X amount of a certain grant that they applied for, that we would get that back for the amount of money that we put into Sting. It used to be a lot more than fifteen thousand, we ended at twenty-four, right at about like eighty-nine hundred. So, we're short from that, but now, we're kind of down to, cause that grant has just whittled away when they have seizures and sales. And then, we get a portion of that sales based on the amount of money that we put back in. Aside from the Michigan State Police, we are by far the largest contributor in what goes into Sting because we give a full body, which is a hundred and ten thousand dollars essentially to them. So, we just basically wait, and our Treasurer's Office is the fiduciary for Sting. So, we get to look at that every year and wonder if we were supposed to have more money. Courthouse Security, reimbursements for that come through transports. Dive Team, that is all donation-based. Traditionally, they are anywhere from a thousand to two thousand dollars in donations that they've received, and normally, those are from families or friends of families of victims, so. ORV Patrol, we have not had the grant reimbursement, we won't see that until about October. Our Corrections Department Jail is, they are right at about like thirty-eight percent of their total revenues to date. Medical Examiners, that's if we have unclaimed bodies, when we collect from people, when they decide that they want the remains. The insurance that comes back in is that reimbursement that we will get from MMRMA, and that'll come back in electronically here shortly. So, when you look at the end of the general fund, Departments by Revenues, obviously, the jail has a large, a large expense, but their revenues that come in tend to be fairly large as well. District Court is another area, just due to the, the volume that goes through with fines, fees, and collections as well, that tends to be an important part of that picture for revenues for the general fund. The next few pages are a little bit smaller, cause you have more department expenses that come under the general fund than you do actually revenue collection areas for that as well. Really, for the most part, there are no departments that are in any type of shock when it comes to where their expenses are. Jury Commission looks high, but- You had to order envelopes, so. And that is because the more jury trials they want, the more supplies we need. And that is not something that her office has control over, I should say. The elections, obviously, it's slightly, yeah, go ahead.
So, that one, the reason that is exceeded is because when I did my budget for, that is vendor payments. So, the election reporting, I was, I actually budgeted five hundred dollars less than what it actually was cause I added, we upgraded the service last year, and then, I forgot to calculate that in. So, that's why that one is slightly over, so that was my bad, sorry.
The next slide is, is your graphs of your one-on-one through your three, three, four expenses to date in the general fund by department. One of my favorite things about looking at these graphs is you can see which departments require the most money because whatever green bars go really long are the ones you're looking for. So, obviously, you have your, your courts. Sheriff Administration is going to be in there as well as you go through. Count Michelle, cause she doesn't go over. Count Michelle, because she doesn't go over. Dollar's lining, she makes that for herself. Your jail, obviously, is going to be one that will fall in there when we get to the next slide, um, but it just gives you an idea that when you're looking at this, you're really looking at those things that are associated with courts, um, prosecution and investigations of those that go through. The next slide for General Fund Department Expenses has, um, Departments three, three, five, through the end, which is our contingency line item. Um, there are a couple of those that are fairly noteworthy to explain. The first one is just simply health departments at fifty percent because we've already sent them two of their four allotments. So they'll come out quite evenly, um, because they bill almost perfectly for that. The other one, um, then we have talked about this before, is this debt service control and that is where we have to repay those taxes back out. Um, and anytime we have somebody that we owe a lot of money back to because they had a lot of taxes, um, that number's going to go up. And you have to remind me this year, we need to, that's a trend. Yeah, so we are having to reimburse a lot more, um, which is, which is interesting in my part. Capital Control, the Capital Control, actually, what is coming out of there right now is there are a couple cell phones that come out of theirs for people that are members of the emergency management, so I'll have to fix that. Um, but the other portion of that that is in there is we do have an employee that, um, is training for G I S in hopes that we will be able to bring that in, um, as a full-time position in the next few years. So that is where that training allocation has gone to for that person as well. Do, the Employee Hospital Assurance is slightly higher. Um, any of the leftover primary, or I'm sorry, priority health H R A reimbursements from non-union employees from twenty-twenty-four's benefits have been paid out of there, so that's put us a little bit higher. Um, we are almost done since it is the end of June at this point, so that's a happy thing. Additionally, um, everybody want to be a notary. The bonds actually is what Michelle's Office pays the notary fees out of, um, and we seem to have a lot of people that have been doing that. And then the local D H S Board is slightly higher because they had requested an allocation in December that did not come through in February for a bill payment, so. Now, I will say the jail's doing pretty well, so we'll throw that in there too. So they are at forty-four percent if it falls through. So, again, when you look at the actual bar graph, um, you see those areas that are going to be kind of your largest in all of those expenses that, that come through. That really long green one is the jail. That should be obvious. The next slide, it is the Payroll by Fund to Date. As I mentioned, we have eleven of twenty-six that have been completed as of five-thirty-one. Um, that being said, that's about forty-one percent. So, overall, with the exception of Corrections Training and Veterans Affairs, um, it's, it's going pretty well, um, as far as our payroll expenses. Sheriff Road Patrol, um, and nine-one-one, um, a portion of those, a portion of those funds, um, for nine-one-one, they again are down three people. Um, so you're, you're seeing that decrease in staffing that has come from there as well. Um, Sheriff Road Patrol, we had a couple of the people that were in the cadets program, um, that we were reimbursed for, so there's been that. And, um, all of these, this payroll to date includes overtime line items and overtime is coming for both of those departments because it's summer now, um, as they work through. The Corrections Training Fund, the one that's at seventy-five point thirty-eight percent, again, that is used specifically for training. Um, and once they run out of money, they're done sending people out of that line item because there's no, they'd have to take it out of the jail fund at that point in time, but they have sent two new, two new officers already through, through that schooling, through Delta College down there. Again, we all know the general fund costs the most amount of money, followed by the Sheriff Road Patrol. When we look at where we are for benefits to date and we're at about fifty percent, um, again, with fully funding the H S As, we have actually fallen pretty nicely at the beginning of the year. It looked horrific because we up-fronted all that money, um, and we are now coming out to where things are, are fairly even. Um, the Sheriff Road Patrol, there is a, um, nice little dip in that benefits by front to date because while those, um, while those cadets are in school actively, that grant actually reimburses us for their, their benefits while they're in there. So that's a, that's a nice positive to that as it comes forward. Yep, most, most benefits out of the general fund. Our Retirement by Fund to Date, um, we have, are halfway through retirements for the year and everything is falling well within. General Fund is almost exactly right on. The ones that have the defined benefit, which is the MERS portion that we always talk about, um, the Sheriff Road Patrol is ninety-eight percent of the Sheriff Road Patrol budget are defined benefit. Um, and then out of the general fund, you have those members that are with the jail, the union members that are with the jail, and we have two or three people that were grandfathered into the time years ago when this decision was made that still have some sort of, um, payments into a defined benefit for that. And I'm pretty sure they're all on Marcy's office. That's because you have longevity, so, which is a nice thing. So, that's where those come in, and I know that, uh, Tyler touched on this a little bit, but we are, we are in the upswing still of how much we're going to have to contribute to the MERS-defined benefit. Um, we had a huge unfunded liability. If you were to take the portion that we pay in for one person's defined benefit and, and divide those dollar amounts up, seventy-five to seventy-six percent of what we pay to MERS is actually funding that unfunded liability and you can look at the numbers as they go through and see, this is where it crashed and we've lost money in the market and we've slowly been coming back up to that. Um, but we, we are looking at twenty-twenty-eight to twenty-thirty to where we're flat and start to fall back down again, um, and be at a fully funded rate, so. That's one of those areas that in my opinion, it's, it's, it can't ever grow. Um, we don't want to add on a defined benefit to people because we cannot afford the legacy costs that come along with it, so. Yes. That gives us more money.
Fun.
Yeah. So, Sheriff's Road Patrol, um, obviously, they're going to pay for all of their officers out of that, but that would put more money back into their budget. So, if we're fully funding a retirement, and I don't know the total, total off the top of my head, oh, let's go back and look. Um, so for instance, Sheriff Road Patrol, if we're saying right now that four-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars of their budget, of their two-point-five-million-dollar budget is specific to retirement, when we start to go back down again, um, within a few years, you'll see a hundred-and-fifty thousand that's available to put towards something else. So yes, it'll be a nice little, it'll be a nice little surprise for that. So overall, um, I would say it's, it's going well. There's been no big surprises yet. Staffing, turnover continues to happen. Um, one of the statistics that I just want to share with you guys that doesn't have anything to do with this budget before we move on to the calendar, um, is in calculating our turnover for twenty-twenty-four, we were just above fourteen percent. And the state of Michigan has dipped back down to five-point-four percent. Um, of that turnover, about four-point-seven percent was actual retirees, but that still leaves us at close to ten percent for employee turnover. Um, and that's a pretty big number. And, I mean, that's across all the departments. Um, I didn't go down and break up, you know, how many people decided they didn't want to be a law enforcement officer anymore or, you know, didn't like working in the courts because, you know, they don't make enough money. But I'll be curious to see how that changes with twenty-twenty-five, since twenty-twenty-five's the year that we have equalized wages but changed benefits. Um, so I'll be curious to see how that number dips.
What was your, what was the state you said?
Five-point-four percent is the state's average.
Five-point-four?
Mm-hmm.
That's low. I would have thought it would have been higher.
Yes, they were, uh, several years ago, they were at like twelve percent. I said within the last two or three years, um, excluding retirement from that twelve percent.
Is that state-like, government-type employees or just as a whole?
No, just statewide.
Every business?
Statewide statistic, yeah.
Got it.
Ebb and flow, but I would say a good average is a hundred-and-seventy. Mm-hmm. During this time of year, we go up for seasonals, um, and then we'll add on Gypsy Moth surveyors, but we can be anywhere from one-seventy to like two-hundred. So now let's talk about next year's budget, when the chairperson says she wants to.
Okay. Is there any other questions on the budget review?
That's good, thank you.
Thank you. Twenty-twenty-six budget pre-preparation calendar.
So, I try to do this, I do this every year and it's basically a rough estimate of working backwards from having the budget approved by the end of November, which is the goal, um, statewide, to have it approved by, by November thirtieth, um, so that you have thirty days to prep, prepare, get everything in and publish. And it just makes everybody's lives easier. So I basically backtracked from the end of November to August. And, I mean, essentially, I'd kind of like you guys to take this, look at this, um, when you're getting that information about what you'd like to see to Darlene, let's then add that in. On when do I need to have that report presented to you guys? When do you want this information emailed so that we can follow this? Um, Wage, and I don't have July on here, but there are three meetings already set up for the Wage and Salary Committee to meet. They are gathering their information. Um, Noel's hoping to actually be able to accomplish everything in one, but they will have their final findings, um, to present to the Board of Commissioners on August fourteenth. So with the August fourteenth meeting, um, nope, sorry, thirteenth, because my calendar starts on Monday. So with the August thirteenth meeting, it would be Wage and Salary Committee presenting the recommendations to the Board of Commissioners for the twenty-twenty-six budget. Um, and obviously, we know the recommendations. Um, but starting in August, our plan for Noel and I is, um, her and I should have the information from Wage and Salary on the recommendations to start updating the Wage and Fringe Spreadsheets we do for all the departments and funds. Um, and so that gives us an idea of, okay, what does that look like for the general fund? How much is that going to increase? So I, at that time, would be able to say, oh, that's another, you know, million dollars across the board if we go with the recommendations. Also, I have reached out to both of our new reps for the P O L C. One has gotten back to me, the other has not. Um, both are willing to start negotiations, um, sooner rather than later, but the one has said he's, he'd even be willing to start meeting in July to talk about like just the basic things that have to be changed, that are, that are out of date in the contract. So, looking to start all of that at the beginning of August. When we finalize those Wage and Fringe Spreadsheets, um, initially, what Noel and I are going to do is use that eight-point-six percent benefit increase cap that, that Blue Care has given to us, um, as a worst-case scenario. I'm expecting us to be going to come back at anyhow, but we could be amazed. So then as we move forward, what we'd like to see is then that, um, when the Board of Commissioners does have that information presented to them in August, um, there'll be some input that comes back from that meeting, even if it's just rough, like heck, there's no way we're going to come to that, um, that's way too big of a number, let's look at maybe A B C. So then if you want to see a couple of different scenarios in costs, that would give us the opportunity to recreate those spreadsheets and come up with those figures for you. And so we would continue to work on those through the week of the nineteenth, um, and the twenty-sixth, get those finalized, so then in your meeting on the twenty-seventh, um, you could have more discussion direction on the wages. Um, we are also set, uh, set for our next, um, Cal Budget and Finance meeting, um, so we could tie all of that, where are we at for twenty-twenty-five, moving forward to twenty-twenty-six together as well. That Thursday, I will send out the, on the twenty-eighth, I'll send out the revenue worksheets to the departments, um, so they can get those figures back to us. And then that way, if there's any changes in collections, fines, fees, we'll have that information as well. We are set right now through B C N to have all of the data gathered and back by September first. Um, obviously, Noel and I will meet then, um, give or take, the third is a good estimate, but sometime in that week with Jennifer Patterson, our third party, to see where we are with our Blue Cross, our Delta Dental and our Vision costs for twenty-twenty-six. The other portion of that that I want to look at, um, so that we have the information is where the union H R A spending is compared to funding of H S A. So we have that because we're going to need that for negotiations, but we're also going to just need that for general budget purposes as well. Still doing negotiations. Um, your meeting on the tenth, um, really need a final recommendation for wage increases. Um, and I know that's not a lot of time for you guys, so if we end up needing a special meeting or smaller meetings, um, Noel and I will be available for that. Um, get the revenue worksheets back to me so I can get those inputted. Um, Noel and I's plan then would be on the twelfth to finalize those spreadsheets, um, with the wage and the fringes on them and email them to the departments. Then by Tuesday, um, get the expense worksheets to them. That would give enough time for somebody to look those over and for Michelle to be like, hey, I know that Heather Pratt's really wonderful, but was it supposed to be thirty-seven thousand or seventy-three thousand you were paying them? Because you wrote seventy-three. These things happen. So I appreciate it when they look at their sheets. Yeah, that's when I've had too many Bud Lights during budgeting, so. Um, and then the expense worksheets, we always give a couple weeks, um, and I will promise you that I can have several department heads that will turn around and give it back to me within twenty-four hours, and I will have other department heads that I will still not get it back on the thirtieth. Um, it's just the way it always works and unfortunately, sometimes it's my bigger departments that do that to me. Um, but we will hound them until they get there. Um, that being said, on the second meeting of September, I thought that would be a really good time to do, uh, kind of an open benefit discussion with the information that we've gathered, um, if we need to have Jennifer come in for a presentation. I'm hoping there won't be any major, you know, major issues or changes. And then a, hopefully, a union negotiation update. This is where we're at, this is what we're looking for. Hopefully by then, we have a plan, a final plan, um, because to me, that will kind of, we not, may not be negotiating, but if we're talking about Wage and Salary Committee recommendations, we have union membership that sits there, they're going to be included in the surveying, so you guys will have all that data available anyhow while negotiations are going on with personnel and finance, so. October tends to be the busiest. Yay, October! So, this is when we will have the Budget and Finance Committee, um, meet and we will look through those department requests that they have gotten back to me and that whole week, that first week, once they get them back, that's where I data and put everything into department requested, um, then send it back out so they double-check it and then. So we would sit down and be able to go through those. Um, I can email those out and print them out to Budget and Finance early. Um, that Wednesday at the, at the board meeting, I would say that you'd have your two commissioners representing Budget, um, Budget and Finance, kind of given open, this is what we're seeing, these are the trends that we're having, um, still a union negotiations update if needed, and then final benefit decision. So if we need to change anything, if we want to par for course for that at the beginning of October. We had discussed doing the Budget and Finance Committee meeting with individual departments for presentations as well. Those could be tentative in that area based on everybody's schedule, um, but I just picked a couple days to throw in there, um, prior to then that Wednesday meeting. If there are any changes, I always try to make sure there's like a set deadline so Budget and Finance could communicate, hey, this is what we're looking for from you, um, with your, your budget that you've requested. On the meeting on the twenty-second, that would be where we would have kind of that finalized budget for the full board to have received and to have gone through, um, and have those open discussions with any changes, corrections, um, kind of more of a formal presentation from the Budget and Finance Committee to the Board of Commissioners. Um, so you can have that input in discussions on any of the requested changes. By Thursday, um, after that, if the board has requests for budget revisions for the departments, um, then that information could be communicated back out. The budget has to have a public hearing notice published in the paper at least seven days prior to, um, so I have that down for the twenty-eighth. Which then puts us into... So I have that down for the twenty-eighth, which then puts us into, that's exactly, which then would put us into November, which hopefully would have the public hearing then on your first meeting in November. And we are a first and a third meeting this month. So that meeting is actually on November fifth. So you would have the public hearing. I have little stars by these. Hopefully we'd be able to approve the union contracts, but we're just going to pray that it's at least by the end of November. And go through any motions that may need to be approved for the actual budget itself based on what the decisions were made for raises, benefits, allocations. Same thing you've done the last couple of years here for you. We have open enrollment as well, which is another reason that it's always that, that getting those benefits approved is essential because we have to have that two-week open enrollment period in order to offer the types of benefit plans that we have, the cafeteria style. I would love if at November nineteenth, we would be able to actually approve the twenty-twenty-six budget. Sometimes that, that goes off a little, but with us not having a meeting on the twenty-sixth, the nineteenth is that first meeting that comes up on there. Worst-case scenario, if we need another week, then none of us go anywhere for Thanksgiving? You don't go anywhere anyhow, but.
We come in usually working.
Yeah, I know you are. But I also have on there, if, if needed, then in December, if we need to have a committee of the whole meeting, if we need to have approval of the budget if it wasn't already approved. The last few things that are on there are, are just kind of, these are the end-of-the-year type of housekeeping. The fifteenth is our lost accounts payable for twenty-twenty-five. After that last accounts payable comes through, I run, I will run the budget adjustments based on the, the info I have at hand and do final, final year-end budget adjustments. I did not do final ones this year, which is why we have some that were off in the general fund still. So that's what happens. And to note onto that, so the budget actually, you can actually run budget reports that show you, and we can do that mid-year at the one in August, but that show you this was the original budget and this is the adjusted budget. So you can see that difference, you know? So yeah. And then we get to have last paychecks on the twenty-fifth. Would I, what? Oh, yeah, look at November! To know if I worked in deer hunting for him. I mean, really, if you get it, you got the twenty-eighth, you're good. Yeah. I mean, you really got all in November.
And fifteenth on a Saturday now, Rex, so there's no excuses.
One, Jody, as the new person here, I think the calendar is very helpful. I mean, I guess if you've done that all the time, that's great, but for me, it has a really good ability to say, we have to back into this. And I think part of our commitment needs to be to do our homework and get you the answers when you need it so that you are done by the nineteenth. I mean, if we're asking our department heads to give you data and stuff by a certain time, it's only important for us as commissioners to act the same way. We must give you the information when the deadline is. And I, I just think that we need to be diligent on that. If we have to do extra conversations and talks to get answers, then that's one thing, but that would be my commitment, is that I will do my due diligence to get you the information that you need on the deadline. So that the nineteenth is good. And I think that if you have two department heads here, does this schedule work? I mean, does that work for everybody too? I mean, I can say that, but I'm not the one doing the work.
This is Marcy's first year as the treasurer doing it, but yeah, this has always been helpful.
Okay, the timeline, good, okay.
Yeah, we're always just waiting on you guys. And the numbers from the benefits.
Yeah, I was going to say, let's, let's not do that to this group this year, right?
Well, I think if we have everything like we're planning, anybody that wants to see certain things by August first.
I agree.
Then it won't hold it up because that's kind of what would happen, is we would have a meeting and then there would, somebody would have more questions and more questions and then nobody wanted to make a decision. So.
I think that's only fair.
Yeah.
I really do, for you guys. It is a long, arduous process. And to rush that and to not have us do our due diligence and get you that information is, we will, we need to do that.
October tends to be your busiest month, where all that information and those things come through. So I don't know how we put it on, on your calendar well so that people understand, and I was thinking this when you were talking about, this is what we'll be focusing on moving forward for the rest of the year, so that people understand that their qualms with like level control structures might not make it to a work session if that work session needs to be totally devoted to a discussion related to benefits and wages moving forward for the budget.
Correct.
They can wait till the lake meeting.
Yep. Hundred percent agree. Yeah. Just a couple little logistic things on my end too, because so, I'm not as familiar with the Wage and Salary Committee. So I know in the past it's probably been made up of department heads, but now you have a group that aren't? Or how, how, what does that makeup look like?
So we've never actually, yeah, so we've never actually had it made up of department heads. Last year, I think, was the first year that we ended up with a lot of department heads. I think they wanted to speak up on behalf of their employees. Does that sound right to you? I, I don't know, maybe not. But there was a lot of department heads that said, we'd like to be on there. So I don't remember everybody that's on there this year, but the mix of those is a couple people from, a couple employees from the court side, employee from prosecutor's office. I have one from the clerk's office, one from the treasurer's office. We do have one or two from the sheriff's office that are sitting out there, at least one that I can think of for sure, a representative from animal control. So that we try to have a little bit of everybody and a little bit of people at every, at every grade. Ideally, the more people that I can have that are in grades two through five, I think the better it is for, for you guys and for me to get that information, because those are our people where our turnover tends to happen, because they're leaving for something else. So they will sit down and what they do is they take the comparable counties that were selected when we paid all the money for the wage survey. And those comparable counties have a comparable population and a comparable S E V to us. So we're not utilizing, and there's a couple others in there that, that are thrown in, like Otsego County, and that's simply because we could drive to Otsego County for another job and receive that pay. Like, okay, these are counties that maybe they don't have the same S E V, but they're within drivable distance to be competitive market-wise. And so they essentially call around, they get all the information on wage and salaries related to those comparables, and they sit down and they discuss them and they review them. And they figure out, you know, what's the average looking at? What is the cost of living index for, for social security? They go through the budget, Noel heads this up, because I didn't, I didn't want to head this up. I wanted this to be open.
HR, which kind of fits her role, right?
They need to be able to complain.
The reason I ask really is because if I think about people who understand budgets, if you're an employee, I'm not sure the grade level, if you have no idea about budget, it's easy to come in and go, well, look at all this. And I'm not saying they would do that, but if you don't understand, a department head gets it, you get it. But if they don't, then you're starting at a ball, you're starting at a position where you have like no idea how that's going to impact the budget. Then you go back and go, oh, I'm sorry, we're not going to do that because we can't. So where's that balancing act to help them not overshoot when they have no idea what the budget is?
Noel is the, Noel is the balancing act. So that is a part of what she goes through with them. She actually spends a little bit of time talking to them about the processes and explaining that, and they sit down and then they look at, okay, the recommendation comes back, and I think last year it was like twelve percent or the year before. One of these years, it lasts a few years. And I'm not saying it wasn't off.
I understand, yeah.
You know what I mean? But budgetarily wise, it's like, okay, here's what we would be looking at. These are the things that we'd be asking the Board of Commissioners, like, where would you take this money from? Are you willing to be one less person in your office so that everybody can receive, you know, are you willing to give up benefits?
Okay.
So then there's that, the idea is then that, that full kind of communication comes back to the Board of Commissioners.
And I'm sure their department heads, if that person's saying, we'd be willing to get rid of one person, and the department head says, uh, no, I'm not.
Correct.
So that communication between department heads and this committee, they're getting that feedback before they come forward. Okay. Good, okay. Same for you guys, you feel good with that? Okay. I'm just making sure that balance, I mean, I just hate to have people come forward and want, and then all of a sudden, no. And that didn't get communicated.
It doesn't work perfect.
Almost always no.
Couple yeses, but, but it is, it's, it's a two-part for me. I mean, last year, I think when they came forward with it, I think for you guys as at a board level, you were like, what? Twelve, fourteen percent, whatever, that is insane, the reality of it. But then to take that information and really dive down into it and see how far our clerk positions, our animal shelter workers, our animal control officers were, were underpaid compared to other people, at least gave us an idea of where we could go to try to, you know, to try to make things a little bit better.
It was a good exercise, no doubt. At least from the person experienced from the backend watching, you know, knowing that they could compare that was definitely an important piece to the, to the pie, so.
Any other questions?
Not right now. Sorry, I might have more later as we go.
Yes.
I've been through this quite a few times. The kicker is that we can't give employees what we don't have. That's, that's the end result. I remember back twenty years ago or so, we were having budget meetings after Christmas. I mean, they, not anymore, that was back in the day, but I think Michelle might remember those days. But that was like twenty, twenty-oh-five, twenty-oh-six, twenty-oh-seven. But the kicker is we can't, and employees understand we can't give them what we don't have.
I don't, I'll just buy in on that. I don't think any employee thinks that we would be able to give money that we don't have. I think the, I think the discrepancy, where they're sitting from, when you hear fund balance, it's just like in the schools. Your unions go, you got the fund balance, spend the money. It is the way the, the, we're not in the hole. So in their minds, you have money. I don't think they're asking for us to give money that we don't have, but if we have money, then that's where they come from. If I'm not mistaken, that's the viewpoint, that's the vantage point for them.
We, we speak from a position, we have an eighteen, we have a goal of eighteen percent fund balance. We only have a little bit of wiggle room. How much, how much wiggle room do we have between eighteen percent, twenty-two percent? How much money is that?
Like three-hundred-thousand dollars. Essentially, the easiest way to do it is just equate every hundred, every hundred-thousand dollars is a percent essentially. Take a little bit, but.
I always figure eighty, eighty thousand from one percent. Then you have to realize perpetuity. And we had that discussion years ago, people said, well, it's only two percent, it's a hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. The bottom line is, it's every year, it just isn't a one-time shot. Sometimes people have it difficult, you know, grasping the fact that it goes on forever.
The longevity costs are definitely something.
Longevity costs, absolutely.
Motions and resolutions we have done. Public comment? With no public comment, this meeting will be adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
I find it very odd that we had twenty people in a regular meeting, only here to talk about the lake, but the most important thing we do in this as commissioners is to deal with the budget and.
And they want us to spend all our money on the lake.
They're gone.
Yeah.
So that is, you know, that shows you where that priority really lies.
Yep. All in favor, say aye.